Good evening. Welcome to the September meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please join me in saying Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. Twenty years ago this month, our country suffered the worst attack on our homeland since Pearl Harbor. The surprise attack brought virtually all activity to a temporary halt. Schools closed briefly, travel ground to a halt, sporting events were canceled, and governmental meetings were postponed. In Greenwich, the RTM was scheduled to meet that month, eight days after the attack, on a Wednesday, September 19th, due to a religious holiday conflict. No other town board or commission had held a meeting between the day of the attack and the date of the RTM's September meeting. I received several requests to cancel that September meeting, but rejected them because the president was urging the country to resume normal activities. But I knew that the occasion demanded something special, something that would honor the tremendous loss that our community and nation had suffered. As is so typical in our town, everyone we turned to for help in making the opening of our meeting a special one agreed. To honor the 343 FDNY members who died that day, our own Greenwich Fire Department provided an honor guard. Despite my desire to thank them personally, they insisted on anonymity and that I identify them only as members of the Greenwich Fire Department. We were led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mark Dawson, another member of the Fire Department, who had spent the prior week at the World Trade Center with his rescue dog Elvis, helping the search efforts there. Elvis accompanied Mark at our meeting. And I turned to a family friend, a senior at Greenwich High School, who had sung in various choirs and choral groups in Greenwich as a boy and was a member of the high school premier choral group, to ask if he might be willing to recruit some classmates to sing the National Anthem for us. That family friend was Matthew Carstensen, and he graciously recruited four other members of the group to join us at the start of our meeting. I regret that we did not then have a video recording of the wonderful rendition of the National Anthem they gave with all of our members joining in. A common question I am asked about my tenure as moderator of this great body is what was the most memorable meeting you presided over? I've answered that question the same way every time. That first meeting following 9/11 is the most memorable to me. The solemn ceremony that opened the meeting with the beautiful voices of the high school seniors leading us in the National Anthem and the entire membership joining together to respond, to support each other, was simply unforgettable. Now, the only record we have of that meeting unfortunately is the official minutes of the meeting, which lay out in a rather colorless way what actually took place. And you can see the reference there at the bottom to the five high school seniors. Their names were Matthew Carstensen, Ned Breen, Ben Ellerin, Will Bates, and Don Romanello. And I see we misspelled Matthew in our minutes. Should have two Ts. Next. In the 20 years since that meeting, I've wanted to pay proper thanks to those boys for what they did for us. With this being the 20th anniversary, I knew that time had come. The boys graduated Greenwich High School that following spring, and two of them quickly found themselves in the military, joining the war on terror that had resulted from the attack. When we remember 9/11 each year, it's good that we recall those with local ties who perished that day. But I believe it's equally important that we remember those in the military who volunteered to put their lives at risk to protect us from future 9/11s. And so I invited Matt Carstensen and Ned Breen, two of the five who honored us with their voices 20 years ago, to join us tonight to thank them for what they did for the RTM 20 years ago. But more importantly, for what they have dedicated their lives to in the 20 years since that event. And they join us here tonight on Zoom. Each of these men has a remarkable record of accomplishment in his respective service. I will begin with Ned Breen, who incidentally is the nephew of former RTM member Ed Manganello of District 6 and 12. And I want to thank Ned's parents, Jane and Tim, who joined us on Zoom, not only for the wonderful job they did raising Ned, but also for facilitating getting in touch with Ned for tonight. Ned is an old Greenwich native and Greenwich High graduate, 2002. He then went to the Naval Academy, graduated in 2006 with a degree in international relations. He has numerous postgraduate degrees since then from the Naval War College and the Fletcher School of International Law and Diplomacy. But following his graduation from the Naval Academy, he became a naval aviator, designated a naval aviator in April 2009, and he flies the F-18 Hornet. He completed two combat deployments in support of operations Enduring Freedom and New Dawn in the period 2010-2013. In fact, CNN did an article on America's Top Guns. This is an article that's currently online. Unfortunately, we can't access the video, but Ned was featured in the video. And you can see, starts off the article interviewing Ned on what his role was in that deployment. He has also deployed to the Western Pacific in 2018. He has served as an instructor pilot, and he has served as the Chief of Naval Air Training, Air-to-Ground Weapons Officer, overseeing the training of future strike fighter aviators. He has accumulated more than 2,500 flight hours, 50 combat missions, and nearly 400 arrested carrier landings. His personal decorations include an air medal, two awards, Navy and Marine Corps Commendation Medal, Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medal, three awards, and numerous others. Ladies and gentlemen, Lieutenant Commander Timothy Ned Breen.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Tom, thank you very much. It's a pleasure for me to be here. It's a pleasure as well to see Major Matthew Carstensen again after so long. Good to see you, buddy, as well as a good welcome hello to my folks and also my fiancee Heather, who's joining us tonight. I'm sure that you can all excuse my appearance. I went with the slightly more casual civilian attire for this evening. The reason being is because the current job that I'm going to is next I will be going down to the U.S. Embassy in Tegucigalpa, Honduras in the next several months, and I'll be reporting there to be the next naval attache advising the ambassador and the rest of the country team down there. But I want to start off real quick to just say that, one, it's very much a pleasure and an honor for me to be here and to speak with all you tonight. And two, to just kind of tell you a little bit about what I can recall and just some of my general reflections as time has gone on. I do recall actually that singing engagement that we had shortly after 9/11. I remember that being a rather sobering time for all of us. And, you know, some of my closest friends in high school were in the overtones, the singing group which we all had and which we carried on for a number of years. And it was an incredible opportunity for us to be able to get together and sing that National Anthem that day. And I remember as we were singing it and reflecting in my own mind afterwards that, you know, the National Anthem actually sounded just... We always, I like to think that we always sounded pretty decent every single time we sang. But then that National Anthem that day, you know, just sounded the next level above. It just sounded a little bit more rich, full, diverse, and just kind of had a very mesmerizing tone to it. Fast forward a number of years, and I know that, you know, Tom has read off a number of my accomplishments, and he'll soon read off all of the wonderful accomplishments that Matt has had in his distinguished career. All of that's wonderful, but I think what I can take away from all of it is the idea of service and the idea is basically one of looking out for the welfare of others in any capacity is, as it would have it, much of my capacity has of course been of a military nature. But through it all, the idea of service and going back to kind of the key tenets that we learned at the Naval Academy of honor, courage, and commitment, and devoting oneself to others and to making both an organization better and just, you know, giving it your all, giving it your all and honest effort and making the world around you, the people around you, a better place and having a positive impact, no matter how big or how small. That's something that I've really kind of come to appreciate and have taken away throughout all of the different tours that I've had in this. And it's also been very remarkable and very humbling for me to be able to work with a variety of people from all different walks of life, all different parts of the country, from various other countries in our military, people who have grown up and had very, very different experiences than perhaps what I might have, or Matthew, or any of the others. But to still, to see all of them come together in one common purpose despite having very, very different ideas and ways and methods and experiences, that's really remarkable. And that's really kind of what I've been most thankful for in my service. As I said, it's a great honor to be here tonight to speak with you and to see all of you. And I would say that is again, this forum is also a forum of service, of looking out for the welfare of others. In your case, the town, the neighbors, everyone else that you see in this room, and, you know, your families. And that's also truly remarkable. So my hat is off to you. Happy to be here, and thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us, Ned. Next is the young man who answered my request for help 20 years ago this month. I have known Matt Carstensen since he was in preschool. As a matter of fact, while they might not recall, I coached both Ned and Matt in T-ball in the OGRCC program. I've known them for over 30 years. Ned is also a native of Old Greenwich and a graduate of Greenwich High School. He enlisted in the Army as an infantryman right after high school, and he deployed to Afghanistan and earned the rank of corporal. And in those years, as an enlisted man, they noticed what he had to offer and encouraged him to apply to West Point to become an officer, which he did. And he graduated from West Point with a degree in geopolitics. When Ned and Matt were going to West Point and the Naval Academy, Navy was in the midst of an incredible windstring against Army in football. And I recall going to hear Matt address the Retired Men's Association in the fall of his senior year at West Point in 2009, right after Navy had beaten Notre Dame in football. And I asked him whether, as a member of the military family, he celebrated such an upset win of a military academy over a national football powerhouse. And with me was my daughter, who he knew was planning to attend the Naval Academy the next year. He did not pause for one second. He looked right at my daughter and said, "After these past three years, I hope Navy loses every game it plays for the rest of time." So after he graduated as an infantry officer, his entire operational experience has been in high readiness parachute units. He served as platoon leader, battle captain, and executive officer of the 1st Battalion 501st Parachute Infantry Regiment, where he then deployed a second time to eastern Afghanistan. And then with the 2nd Battalion 505th Parachute Infantry Regiment out of Fort Bragg, North Carolina, he deployed to Iraq in support of Operation Inherent Resolve against the Islamic State. Matt has served in Germany at the Joint Multinational Readiness Center. He speaks German and Arabic. He is currently at Fort Leavenworth in Kansas. He recently graduated from the U.S. Army Command and General Staff College. His personal decorations include the Bronze Star, Meritorious Service Medal, NATO Medal, Army Commendation and Achievement Medals, and numerous others. Ladies and gentlemen, Matthew Carstensen.
Mr. Moderator, thanks for the kind introduction. Just want to point out that the Army grad dressed up. Classic Naval Academy move. Ned, great to see you. And I realize the audience I'm saying that to because I see the Breenes as well. So first, thanks for the very kind introduction.
If I could just interrupt. I did forget to welcome your parents, Sheila and Peter, who are sitting with us here in the auditorium. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, and similarly, I wish I could have joined the meeting in person, but I very much appreciate that I can participate virtually. So similar to Ned said, I found it funny as I was thinking through my own lines and how the military, we all seem to have some similar thoughts because, tell me if these sound a little familiar, but if you remember back to the 12th, 13th, 14th of September 2001, I'd say many people were seeking answers. Many people were grieving. Vast majority of people were scared, but overwhelmingly, I think people wanted to help. And I wanted to help. American Red Cross wasn't looking for 16-year-olds at Ground Zero. But a few days later, Tom Byrne called. So the five of us sang the 14 lines of the National Anthem to inspire, to calm, and to honor this country that we love. And I remember thinking at the time, different than Ned, thinking it sounded great. I remember thinking it was a little trivial, considering all things, but at the same time, it was meaningful. It was a little paradoxical. And in a similar paradox, after we finished high school, my decision to enlist in the Army wasn't necessarily in character, or at least not in my service character. I don't think I was tough. I wasn't athletic. I wasn't brave. I wasn't stoic. But I wanted to help. I wanted to serve others. I wanted to act in a way which made others proud, which made them want to serve something bigger than themselves, to inspire and broaden a sense of proud togetherness. And I think that's a reflection of the lessons I learned from my family. So it's great to hear my parents are able to sit in the back. It's a lesson my wife and I try to sell to our sons Ryland and Quinn now. It's lessons I learned at St. Catherine's in Riverside and Christ Church in Greenwich. And kind of similar to Ned, I think it's a characteristic etchings of the fibers of the town. So whether participating in Safe Rides at the Red Cross, Midnight Run to support the homeless in Manhattan, Habitat for Humanity in Bridgeport, Youth Conservation Program of the town of Greenwich, lifeguarding at Island Beach. If I saw an opportunity within the community to help, there was always an opportunity in Greenwich. So that's why I'm appreciative for this recognition this evening because with representatives here, I find a like-minded audience. Ned said something the same, where you internalize, you demonstrate, and you inspire that same kind of sense of service. So to throw appreciation right back, I appreciate the ability for the RTM to build this continued sense of service. And it's... You're setting conditions for the youth to follow, and I'm very appreciative for it. So with that, Ned, it's fantastic to see you. Hello, Breenes. Hello, my parents. And thanks for letting me speak tonight.
Ned and Matt, thank you for joining us and for sharing your thoughts with us. It has been an honor and a privilege to have you with us. We thank you for what you did for us 20 years ago and for what you have done in the years since. I wish we could do more for you. Please know that we wish you continued success in your careers, and it is our hope and prayer that you remain safe from harm in all that you do for us. All of us here in the RTM say thank you and Godspeed. All right, that now brings us... Is there any other business that I am neglecting before I get to the call? Okay, so that brings us to the call of tonight's meeting. And at this time, I suggest an organization and how we will handle... There are 15 items before us. There were 16 items. Six has been withdrawn. So that leaves 15 to be disposed tonight. And I did inform our district and committee chairs of what the consensus was for the organization. And typically, I designate items for the consent calendar first, and then if we have items to be combined, I call for a motion to do that after we act on the consent calendar items. Tonight's a little different, and so I will take up that motion to suspend the rules to combine items given our circumstances before we take care of the consent calendar items. But I'll let you know what my recommendation is based on the suggestions received. And it is to put on the consent calendar items 1, 2, 3, 7, 10, 13, 14, 15. And that would leave to be considered outside of the consent calendar items 4, 5, 8, 9, 11, 12, and 16. Now, 11 and 12 are related. Their appointment of Peter Lowe to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there was a request to consider that separately. And so I am suggesting we combine those, since they are related, and proceed that way. So that would mean if that held, that we would take care of the consent calendar items. We would then take up separately 4, then 5, then 8, then 9, then 11 and 12 together, and then 16. So if you are... There has been a lot of discussion though about 11 and 12 and whether it should go on the consent calendar. So what I'm proposing to do is take up a motion to combine them together, which would mean we're going to consider them separately. They wouldn't be on the consent calendar, pursuant to a motion to suspend the rules, which requires a 2/3 majority to pass. And so I will suggest if the sentiment is not to consider them separately, then vote this motion to suspend the rules to combine them down, and I will put them on the consent calendar. Okay? Are we all clear on that? So is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine items 11 and 12 for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend our rules and combine items 11 and 12 for voting purposes. As I said, that motion is not debatable. It is not amendable. And so I will call for the vote on that now. Now, we can do a raised hand vote. I will remind all of our attendees that only RTM members may participate in any of these votes. So if you are in favor of combining items 11 and 12 for voting purposes, meaning we will take them up separately and hear committee reports and have discussion, please raise your hand now. This is to combine 11 and 12 and take them up separately from consent. All right, in the audience, those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules and combine those items? All right, what do we have? I can't access my... Someone? All right, please, please don't take your hands down on Zoom. Keep those hands up. What do you got? 78? All right. So once again, if you are in favor of taking these up separately as combined items 11 and 12, raise your hand now. All right, okay. Put your hands down, please. If you are opposed to this motion to suspend the rules and to combine items 11 and 12, please raise your hand now.
It's a moderator point of information.
Yes.
If we vote one way or the other on this issue, does this mean that these items will go to the consent calendar or they will be taken up separately? So this is to move them from the consent calendar to...
No, 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 no. If this motion fails, I told you I would put them on the consent calendar. They are currently suggested to be taken up separately as two related items. I'm giving the chance to let me know if you want them on the consent calendar. If this does not get a 2/3 majority, then they will go on the consent calendar. And then we'll deal with that.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have a total? That doesn't seem to add up. You said that the hands up were 79 and 45? All right, so... And so we had people...
Moderator, I'm getting some notes from my district that people don't understand if they don't vote yes, what the opposite is. And I think Michael started to clarify it. So maybe talk about what the opposite is. They're confused. I understand, but maybe you want to...
All right, I am going to do this. I am not going to pursue this further. We're wasting too much time on it. We'll take it up separately. I am now going to designate for the consent calendar the following items. Pursuant to our rule, if there is any objection to the designation of these items on the consent calendar, you are offered an opportunity to state your objection. And if 20 members agree, that particular item will come off the consent calendar. And 11 and 12 are not going to be included in this. So item number one is the first item that I will designate pursuant to our rules for our consent calendar, which means that if it remains on the consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports and have no discussion on these items. These are supposed to be non-controversial items that don't require discussion and voting time to. So item number one is the appointment of Stephanie Lakeoff to be an alternate member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring June 30, 2025. Item number two is the appointment of Jennifer Paul Cohen to be a regular member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring June 30, 2024. Item number three is Nermal Nim Patel to be a regular member of the Nathaniel Witherell Board for a term expiring June 30, 2024. The next item is seven. And this is the approval of a lease with neighbor to neighbor for the Horse Neck Lane property. And that's what it is, item number seven, as it appears on the call. Then item number 10 is the authorization of the preparation of plans for the entryway at Greenwich High School. Item 13 is the appointment of Arnold Wells to be an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring October 31, 2022. Item 14 is the appointment of Wayne Sullivan to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring October 31, 2025. And the final item that I am designating for the consent calendar is item 15, which is the appointment of Elliot Benton to be a regular member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses One Word Agency for a term expiring October 31, 2023. Is there any objection to the designation of those eight items to our consent calendar? Hearing none. Will our district tabulators please mark your voting cards consent calendar items 1, 2, 3, 7, 10, 13, 14, and 15, and proceed to poll your delegation? And are we allowing five minutes for this? All right, so in this five-minute interlude, I've asked to play it again in honor of this being the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks. I thought it might be appropriate to just watch this animation. might be appropriate to, to just watch this animation.
There were a couple of days each year you were allowed to take your children to work. And Joe loved it. That was his birthday present, that he would spend the night in the firehouse. We'd have a cake and the guys I work with, they would take a milk container and they'd cut out the facsimile of a building. And they'd put it on the top of the cake and then they would light it up. And they would tell Joe to put it out and he would throw a pot of water on it. The birthday cake was a little soggy, but this is what he wanted. Joe started dating a young lady whose father was a police officer. And he come home one day and he says, I'm taking a police test. I says, Joe, you're only seventeen years old. He says, ah, no big deal. On the other side of the room, my son, John, wanted to be the next Donald Trump. He was going to make a million dollars and take care of his mother and father. But in nineteen eighty-four, I came down with throat cancer. He noticed then how my unit took care of us. And he says, I'm going to become a fireman. I says, you're kidding me. Firemen don't make millions of dollars. How am I going to live like a king? But I was very happy, very proud. My father had been on the fire department and he was the first one to be issued badge number three, four, three, six. And they reissued it to my son, John. So the badge was only used by two. Both the boys would call me when they were working. John would always call around three thirty, four o'clock. And that particular night, September tenth, we spoke for a few minutes and I says, I love you. And he says, I love you. Joe called me in the morning and told me to turn on the television that a plane just hit the Trade Center. And he says, I'm heading south down West Street. This is a big one. And I just says, be careful. I love you. That was it. We had the boys for John for thirty-six years, Joe for thirty-four years. Ironically, badge number three, four, three, six. I don't have any could have, should have, or would haves. I wouldn't have changed anything. There's not many people that the last words they said to their son or daughter was, I love you. And the last words they heard was, I love you. So that makes me sleep at night.
All right, are we ready to continue? All right, so we have disposed of eight of the items on our agenda tonight. At this point, I will again, suggest a motion to suspend the rules. We're definitely taking up the low appointment resolution separately, but since they're related, we should combine them and take only one vote. So is there a motion to suspend the rules and combine eleven and twelve for voting purposes? Has been so moved, all those in favor. Well, let me ask this. Is there at this point any objection to combining items eleven and twelve for voting purposes? Hearing none, that motion to spend the rules has carried on unanimous consent. All right, I will now in numerical order take up what remains. That brings item four before us. Who is presenting? You're presenting that? All right, Alexis Vulgaris, who is both chair of our Health and Human Services Committee and chaired the special committee that we put together following our June meeting to work on this item. We'll present this to her.
Sorry. To consider an act upon the following resolution requested by the special committee originally requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission from June twenty twenty-one, meeting pursuant to the representative town meeting, the Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust. However, I do have two very small Scrivener's errors that I wanted to correct, so I don't know if that's appropriate to announce those now, so it would be a substitute resolution or how you'd like to do that.
Well, if you want to present a substitute, you can do that, or we can amend what's here. It's up to you.
I'm going to present a substitute then. Okay, so would you like me to just tell you where the two errors are in the resolution? So the first is at the top of page five in your call packet. There's a letter one, and it's in the first sentence. It says establishment of the unique designations. And we're adding R one through R five. We neglected to include our one through our five. Right there. Okay, and then and then on page six.
Same thing you want?
No, because I, I, that's what's in the call. I sent an email of the substitute.
No, but you're.
And then on page six at that item number one, where it says two members of the representative town meeting. At the end, we would include each serving a two-year term. So the final sentence would, or the first sentence would read, two members of the representative town meeting nominated by the nominations committee of the representative town meeting and appointed by the representative town meeting, comma, each serving a two-year term. So there are only changes. Thank you.
All right, since that is offered on behalf of the special committee, it does not require a second. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Alexis Vulgaris with the special committee report first.
Good evening. In my capacity of chair, as chair of the RTM Special Committee for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I'll be delivering the committee's report this evening. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who served on this committee. And I think everyone on the special committee came to appreciate how large and complex the issue of affordable housing is. And we realized that there is no quick fix to create an additional twelve hundred units of affordable housing, which is roughly the amount of units needed to bring Greenwich to the ten percent threshold and trigger a moratorium on large developments coming in under eight thirty G. By way of background, the special committee was created at our June twenty twenty-one meeting and was comprised of eight members, two from each of the standing committees that considered the original res- two from each of the original, two from each of the committees that considered the original resolution. We met weekly and in person throughout the summer from June through late August, and we were joined each week by Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney, as well as Margarita Albin, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Bob Baralek, a member of the PCC, and Bill Finger, a member of the Affordable Housing Task Force. In addition to our weekly meetings, we also held two public information forums. The first was on July twenty-eighth and the second was on September ninth. Our process was methodical and deliberate. We solicited questions and comments from standing committees as well as individual RTM members, and then worked our way through the list of questions and inquiries. We also researched how affordable housing trust funds were structured, not only in Connecticut, which admittedly has very few, but also in other parts of the country to assemble an ordinance that the committee believes utilizes best practices and makes sense for Greenwich as it attempts to create more affordable housing. I also think it's very important to stress that at this time, the trust is structured, so all of the money invested in the trust is private money through private donations. There are no municipal funds being used and there are no, and there is no municipal land being used in these transactions. I'd like to highlight some of the notable differences as well as the overlaps from the June version and the current iteration. There are four big ones. First, the special committee is recommending that the Board of Trustees be reduced from eleven members to seven. We felt that a more, we felt that a smaller board comprised of members with very specific and targeted skill sets would be the most effective way to evaluate and review applications. Brooks Harris, one of our members likened the board to a loan screening committee, and we all agreed that was a very good description. The second thing is we added the requirement that the chairperson of the Board of Trustees present an annual report to the RTM each year summarizing the activities of the trust. We are recommending that the award threshold by which the RTM would get involved remain at five hundred thousand dollars. And we are also recommending that the threshold by which the RTM rejects an award remain as a super majority or two thirds as opposed to a simple majority. I'll explain why we are recommending those two, two things later in my report. I think at this point, everyone is aware of what state statute eight thirty G is and how municipalities that don't have a minimum of ten percent of affordable housing stock are vulnerable to developers who can largely ignore local planning and zoning regulations and build very large developments so long as thirty percent of the units in the development are designated as affordable housing. The Affordable Housing Trust is one tool that Greenwich hopes to deploy in order to work with developers who are thinking of building a project coming under eight thirty G. But with some financial assistance from the trust would be willing to scale back their project. So how does that work? The trust is designed to work in partnership with developers who are looking for some financial assistance. And in exchange for receiving some financial assistance with the cost of the building, the developer would scale back the project. And with the potential of a smaller building comes the benefits of less bulk, something that may be more aesthetically pleasing, a building that is more consistent with the P O C D, a project that has less of an impact on parking, traffic, sewer, water, et cetera. The other financial incentive the trust provides to the developer is the, the ability for the developer to utilize area median income versus state median income for the purposes of charging rent on the affordable housing units in the building. Currently, the area median income is roughly fifty percent higher than state median income, which allows the developer to collect higher rents for all of the affordable units, thereby making it financially possible to reduce the overall size of the project because it increase, because it allows them to increase the rents. And over a forty-year period, that can cover the costs for originally reducing the total number of units. Regarding the decision by the special committee to retain the five hundred thousand dollar award threshold before the RTM gets involved and the two thirds super majority to reject an award, the special committee voted unanimously eight zero zero in favor of both of these requirements. With very rare exception, every application that the trust is considering for an award has already gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval under eight thirty G. So the project will go through. It's just a question of it will go through, will it go through using eight thirty G with trust money or without trust money? If you use the trust money, you, you have the potential to reduce the scale of the project. The special committee wants to incentivize developers to apply for a trust award. And if the RTM is seen as an impediment to securing an award from the trust, the developer will simply go around the trust and build and apply to build under eight thirty G with no trust involvement. And the building will be bigger and bulkier with no ability to stop the development. The goal is to maintain some control over the outcome. Again, if the RTM rejects an award, it will not stop the project from moving forward. It will only allow the developer, the developer to make the building bigger. The trust is one tool that the town is using to address affordable housing, but there are also some other options not included in this ordinance, such as floating municipal bonds, tax abatements, and tax incremental financing that have the potential to accelerate the town's ability to meet the ten percent affordable housing goal and allow for the eight thirty G moratorium. Again, those options are not something included in the ordinance before you, but they are being explored by members of the PCC and the BET. I also want to mention that the special committee was very sensitive to the fact that some neighborhoods may be more, more vulnerable to development than others due to high, high cost of land. One of the aims of the trust is to work with potential developers to scatter affordable housing throughout the town. In closing, the special committee believes we have constructed an ordinance that makes sense for Greenwich given the state mandates that we are subjected to under eight thirty G. We believe the item that you have before you has the potential to generate more affordable housing for our residents as well as preserve the ability to exercise some control over our outcome. Our committee voted seven zero zero to support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Basham, who is giving the finance committee report?
Mr. Moderator, I believe I am Brooks Harris.
All right, Brooks Harris with the finance committee report.
Thank you. Ed Lopez and I represented the finance committee as we met this summer on the Affordable Housing Trust Committee to review and modify the ordinances proposed in the last meeting and is going to be voted on tonight for the second read. I'm not going to repeat all the good information that Alexis went through other than to highlight the things that we talked about in finance and were important considerations. Eight thirty G, I think people know what that means. It means that developers are exempt from local zoning ordinances if they meet the requirements of affordable housing. And this trust is specifically designed to try and work with those people to reduce the scale of the projects in exchange for some economics. So the way the trust works is initially it's going to be funded with donations, which is good, but eventually, I mean, this is only going to solve a small part of the problem, so it will need to raise additional monies. And if that money comes from the town, which it can, that will have to be approved by both the RTM and the BET, and I'm sure there'll be substantial debate around that. Also, many municipalities charge developers a fee. That would be done through planning and zoning, and that could be added to this fund.
Are you saying you can't hear the speaker? All right, Mr. Harris, we're having trouble hearing you. Could you perhaps get closer to your microphone?
Okay, can, can you hear me now?
Much better, yes.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, so what finance really considered was how this ordinance can help us deal with potential penalties associated with eight thirty G, unconstrained housing development, and you know, potentially further penalties in the future. We talked about how the trust works, economic incentives in exchange for more reasonable scaled projects and projects more in line with the with the, with the, with the, with the sensibilities of the town and the local zoning ordinances. It's initially going to be funded with donations, but it could be funded with town money, but only if the RTM and the BET approve it, so that would be subject to significant debate. Some municipalities charge builders fees that's done through planning and zoning. If that were used to add funds to this trust, that wouldn't come through the RTM. This is really an elegant and efficient way to inspire or to develop some housing and put us closer in, in compliance with eight thirty G. But it's really only the first step, as Alexis alluded to. This will have to be augmented by other things. This is probably the easiest and the most elegant step. It was voted on by finance twelve zero zero approved. We also considered some of the additional oversights that were being discussed by other committees including lowering the veto vote threshold and adding a sunset clause. And while the merits of those were discussed in finance, no vote was taken on that. Thank you.
All right, so your microphone is going in and out on you as, as you speak. All right, with the Health and Human Services Committee report, it's Chair Alexis Vulgaris.
Too many papers. Good evening. Health and Human Services took up the Affordable Housing Trust last Tuesday. Joining us were the usual suspects, Amina Ahmad, Margarita Albin, and Bill Finger. Steve Rubin, who served as the vice chair of the AHT Special Committee, provided an overview of the ordinance, much of which you've already heard in previous reports, so I'm not going to repeat that information. But I did want to share with you some of the questions and comments members made and raised about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. One member wanted to know if people who have, if, if there's anyone who's already expressed an interest in donating and/or why would somebody want to make a private donation to an Affordable Housing Trust Fund? We did learn that there are some individuals and organizations that have expressed an interest in making a contribution, but no formal commitments have been made. And the hope is that in addition to private donors, local corporations might invest in the trust. The ordinance does specify that one member of the Advisory Council should be someone who has expertise in fundraising and marketing as a way of promoting the creation, existence, and opportunities that the trust offers. Another member asked, why now? Why does it seem like there are so many developers that are taking advantage of eight thirty G? And we discussed the proposal that recently came up on Church Street, which is for seven stories and a hundred and ninety units. And Bill Finger explained that with the historically low interest rates, developers are able to either finance a project or secure low interest construction loans or secure low-interest construction loans at very, very low rates, and banks are very receptive to financing multiple-family housing projects. I believe he referred to multifamily housing as the choice du jour for commercial real estate developers. Density on the western side of town was a significant concern for many on the committee. Some members feel that their neighborhoods are being exploited by developers versus the eastern side of town where there doesn't appear to be the same scale of development. We discussed the role of Greenwich Communities, formerly Greenwich Housing Authority, and what they can play in generating a large number of affordable units. If Greenwich made a financial commitment to rebuild some of the larger housing complexes that are currently owned by Greenwich Communities, we could earn housing equivalency points that can be used against 830G. If this approach is used, you are not creating new density, but you are taking existing stock and making it more affordable. That would be a very costly project, far beyond the financial capabilities and capacities of the trust. But it is an option for the town to consider. They can use tax incremental financing or municipal bonds or something like that. Our committee voted 8-2-2. Districts three and seven voted no, and districts four and five abstained. Those that voted no were concerned about density and wanted the town to work with Greenwich Communities more, and those that abstained felt they needed additional information. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chairman of our Land Use Committee, with that report.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members, and guests. The Land Use Committee took up this item four at its regular meeting last Monday. All districts were represented. We had Margarita Albin, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, with us, as well as both Frederick Lee and myself, who were members of the special committee that met this summer to review this ordinance. In addition to the changes that we made to the ordinance as it appeared back in June, we also updated the list of frequently asked questions, the so-called "facts," FAQs, on the town website. And we addressed about two dozen questions that have been raised by committees at our June meeting, many of them from the Budget Overview Committee. And we heard that the Budget Overview Committee would be proposing two amendments to this item tonight. One amendment proposes to change the required votes to deny proposals in amount of $500,000 or more from a two-thirds majority to a simple majority. And the other amendment would propose a six-year sunset clause. Mr. Lee, Frederick Lee of the Special Committee and of the Land Use Committee, explained that the Special Committee considered the idea of a simple majority vote, but felt that two-thirds was preferable. Mr. Lee explained that the 830G, the state law, allows developers to bypass local zoning regulations, and the Affordable Housing Trust is one tool to incentivize developers to work with the Planning and Zoning Commission to develop affordable housing that it feels are more appropriate to a location. If a developer has received the approval and support of the trust and the Planning and Zoning Commission, but the RTM threatens to deny it, then the developer is disincentivized to take advantage of the trust and would simply use 830G, which could result in development that is not favorable to the community. The RTM might feel it is empowered to stop a project, but in fact, it cannot. Mr. Berg, that's me, pointed out that the trust grants are not town of Greenwich taxpayer funds, but is funding from outside sources. I shared that some members of the trust were in favor of a sunset clause, but ultimately voted against a sunset clause. I noted that the RTM can modify an ordinance anytime if it chooses to do so. One member of the Special Committee felt that a sunset clause was essentially a vote of no confidence in the trust. I pointed out that the trust is but one prong in a multi-pronged strategy to meet the state requirements for affordable housing and potentially avoid the negative parts of 830G. A member asked what would happen to the funds in the trust if the ordinance was allowed to sunset. And we heard that the ordinance provides that any remaining funds would have to be used for affordable housing. Another member expressed concern that the trust would send a message to developers that they could propose a project unlikely to be approved and then to negotiate funding and avoid costly litigation. I elaborated that the point is not to pay off developers to comply with zoning, but rather to incentivize developers that might otherwise take advantage of 830G to build something more consistent with our local zoning regulations. The Land Use Committee voted 11-1-0 in favor of the item as it appears on the call. The delegate from District Seven voted no because she wanted to support the Budget Overview Committee's proposed amendments to the ordinance.
Thank you. Kip Burgweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee, with that report.
Legislative and Rules Committee met on Monday. Two of the members of the Special Committee, myself and Aldo Pascarelli, are on the Legislative and Rules. We also had help Bob Barilak from the Planning and Zoning Commission and Margarita Albin, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They noted that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund ordinance is a quite an important thing to have in our box of tools. Brian Rainey on our committee made two motions to amend the ordinance. He suggested that the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Planning and Zoning Director should not be members of the board because of potential conflicts. Bob Barilak advised that we had considered this issue for hours and reached the conclusion that the P&amp;Z expertise was the most essential I don't know one could have on such a trust. They would be essential members. They have, their knowledge base is extensive. They know what the zoning requirements are. They know what the opportunities are. They know more about affordable housing regulations and inventory than anyone else. Also, a vote was taken on this motion, and it failed by a vote of 3, 8 to 0. District Three absent. Mr. Rainey also moved to amend the number of the voters in the RTM who wish to, well, if a project, when the amount of $500,000 or more comes before the RTM, the RTM could deny the funding by a vote of two-thirds. Mr. Rainey moved to change that to a simple majority. The motion was approved by a vote of 7, 4, 0. District Three absent. Districts Seven, Eight, Ten, and Twelve voted no, believing the change was unnecessary. After further discussion, we voted on the item as amended. Vote on legal order as amended was 9, 0, 2. Districts One and Five abstaining. The vote on merits as amended was 9, 1, 1. Both cases, District Three was absent.
And I will call on you to offer that motion after your committee after we hear the report from our Budget Overview Committee. Lucia Jansen, Chair of Budget Overview.
Thank you. Greetings. The BOC's first action was voting unanimously to take up the second read, since curiously, the BOC was not referred this item despite having taken up the first read. Once again, the BOC is overall supportive of the Affordable Housing Fund as one of our town's tools to keep as much local control in addressing affordable housing as possible. In the first read, you may recall, the BOC had identified 16 areas of concern with the implementation. For example, one of the 16 items we highlighted was our interest for greater BET oversight over the fund, particularly because, as you heard earlier, perhaps in the future, the town considers town support invested in some financial manner. Not only was the BEC not expanded, in fact, the BETs were removed altogether, as were RTM members. So all 16 of the BOC's ideas were not adopted by the GH, G A H P Subcommittee. Rather than take each of these 16 items, given the difficulty of addressing all these issues in a second read, the BOC voted on two motions we thought were reasonable and common sense. The first motion is now a Legislative and Rules amendment, and we will speak to that item when it is made by the committee. The second motion you also heard earlier is to adopt a sunset clause, which will also be presented later. Thank you.
So the BOC is rarely, if ever, referred call items because the BOC is special. They are charged with looking at big, big issues, and they are given the freedom to decide what they are going to do. So very easy to decide to take up a call item if that's what they want to do. But that is the philosophy in the past and going forward. All right, Mr. Burgweger, you have the floor.
On behalf of the Legislative and Rules Committee, move to amend the provision in the ordinance, which states that
All right, we're having a little trouble following you. If you could try and speak closer into the mic or...
Motion to amend the provision in the ordinance, which provides that in...
Can you point us to the page in the call, please?
I wish I could. I was looking for it.
Oh, anybody know offhand? What? Just what page? This is a two-thirds vote. All right, page, wait a minute.
Mr. Moderator, page 11.
Okay. Hang on a minute. Page 11, okay, there we go, paragraph six. Are you with us, Ms. Burgweger?
In paragraph six on page 11, paragraph six out of section 6-330, to amend the number of voters required to reject an expenditure of $500,000, over $500,000, brings that from two-thirds of the members to a simple majority of the members present in voting.
All right. That is offered on behalf of one of our committees and does not require a second discussion on the Legislative and Rules motion to amend item four. Do you have anything further to say, Mr. Burgweger?
No.
Lucia Jansen?
Once again, hi. The BOC believes this is a reasonable and common sense amendment. Most notable, it was discussed the high-dollar and substantive issues the RTM currently approves with a majority vote. They are: the operating budget, millions and millions of dollars; the capital budget, hundreds of millions of dollars; bonding resolutions; gifts or grants over $5,000; management leases. All of these are with majority vote. Labor contracts, tonight we have one, majority vote. Municipal improvement on town projects, majority vote. Appointments to our boards, commissions, including the P&amp;Z, majority vote. Ordinance approvals, majority vote. Clearly, a developer cannot claim they are being singled out and that somehow this ordinance has got some kind of ulterior motive. It is common sense. It is reasonable. The BOC voted 9, 3, 0 in support of the motion. Thank you.
All right, we had a speaker sign-up list for this motion to amend. Brian Rainey, to be followed by Stephen Rubin.
Mr. Moderator, Brian Rainey, I think Ms. Jansen made all of my points. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Rubin, to be followed by Kathy Whitaker.
You know, hello. I was going to skip some of what I was going to say because Alexis did such a good job. But hearing the counter arguments from the BOC, I am going to repeat a little bit because I think it's important enough that everybody understand the facts and hear them once again. So I apologize if there's a little bit of redundancy. I was the Vice Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee, and I'm asking you to reject this amendment. Our committee met 12 times. We did extensive research to learn how communities around the country use trust funds to stop the loophole of out-of-scale development. After extensive research and discussion, our committee voted 8 to 0 to approve the supermajority vote. The key to making the trust fund successful is for the developers to have the proper incentives to scale down their building where they are using the 830G exemptions to bypass P&amp;Z. If we put roadblocks up like the simple majority vote, developers will prevail using the loophole. These oversized structures impede the look of Greenwich being a picturesque town. The trust fund is not like other items we vote on because there are no town funds involved. It will be funded by private donations. The RTM has never had the authority to stop any building projects. We have no oversight over the developers. If the RTM were to reject trust fund money, the developer will still build their project using the 830G exemption and build oversized structures in any district regardless of zoning. This rejection by the RTM would just be the opposite of what we want and what we need to attain. There are numerous trust funds around the country and the state. Most do not have any legislative bodies, such as the RTM, vote on trust fund distribution because it is not in their area of governing responsibility. A few that do require legislative approval, like Stanford, use the supermajority vote. Look, all of us want the best for our town. Our committee extensively researched and voted unanimously to have a supermajority. Please do not weaken the ordinance. Please reject this amendment. Thank you.
Kathy Whitaker, to be followed by Scott Kalb.
Hi, I urge you to vote for a simple majority. The question really isn't whether the RTM can reject a project over $500,000. It can. It's just a question of what the number of people that it'll take. So we do have the ability to, you know, prevent a project. And I don't, as all the speakers before me are... As all the speakers before me or several of the speakers before me, Brian included, said, I don't see why this should require. A super majority. Thank you.
Scott Kalb to be followed by Dan Ozesmire.
Good evening. I rise to support item for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as it is. And to vote to reject the proposed amendment to require only a simple majority vote of the RTM. To overturn investment decisions. By the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of over five hundred thousand dollars. Affordable Housing Trust Fund is comprised entirely of private sector contributions at this time. And is an important tool to help the town in meeting state mandated goals for affordable housing. Through its investments, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will give the town a seat at the table. In designing affordable housing projects that are more in keeping with our town architecture and our culture. I won't repeat the reasons why the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is important for our town. But in my view, the RTM should not be involved in second guessing decision making for investments by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Except in extreme cases that should require a super majority. Please remember that this is private sector money working for the benefit of the town. The BOC noted many instances of simple majority voting for RTM oversight. That is true. But this is only for areas where town money is involved and where the RTM has oversight. I think we should put this work beyond the reach of politics. And I believe it's appropriate to require a two thirds majority of the RTM to overturn investment decisions by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think that the RTM can and should be involved in town efforts to deploy public money towards affordable housing. To meet targets set by the state. Remember that this is only one small effort. We're going to have to have many other efforts from the town. In order to solve this challenge. And if we do decide to put public money into the Affordable Housing Trust. At that time, it will require RTM approval and we can at that time stipulate how and where we should have oversight. And what kind of voting rights we should have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Ozesmire to be followed by Margarita Albin.
Thank you very much. This is Dan Ozesmire. There are many points that were mentioned here. First, I want to say I'm completely behind the idea of. The Affordable Housing Trust. Clearly, the state mandates are a significant issue to our town and we need as many tools as we can. I know Lucia mentioned all the other. Precedents for a simple majority, a five hundred million dollar budget, et cetera. But I do think it's important that we remember. When we pass this ordinance, which we will. I think there's vast support in the RTM for this ordinance. That the RTM is in fact seeding significant levels of power and trust. By approving this ordinance. We're accepting that anything under half a million dollars will never come to us. Stanford's threshold was a hundred thousand. People are saying that if there's public money that we're going to have input. But we've also just been told that if P and Z decides to start charging fees for construction and development. That that would not require RTM approval. So I think what a lot of this really comes down to is the view. That the RTM will not be able to take a responsible decision in any project over half a million dollars. And I do sympathize with those that are concerned about not in my backyard, NIMBY, you know, political influence. And that's a fair concern. However. From my experience, the RTM is a very responsible body. This body takes its job very seriously. So right now, we're about to approve a significant. Authority to this great idea. But why should we concede the two thirds majority issue? I would encourage everyone. To vote for the L and R and BOC amendment. To reduce the threshold to only a simple majority for only those projects over half a million dollars. This will not stop the initiative of the trust to go ahead and do this. And ultimately later on, just to, you know, limit my amount of speaking, I would also argue that a six year sunset. Is a very appropriate way to allow this great team to go ahead with this project. But also to understand that it is an unproven, it's a new initiative. And I would add that on the, on the plastic bags and on the tipping and on the permit, we had sunsets of one to two years. A six year sunset should allow this team to prove the worth of this project. Thank you very much.
Margarita Albin.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Good. Good evening again, Mr. Moderator and members of the representative town meeting. My name is Margarita Albin, Chair of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. I am here because I support the proposed Greenwich Affordable Housing Trust Fund ordinance. I do oppose the proposed amendment to go from two thirds to a majority. And. I cite for you the example. That other things only require a majority. This is counterintuitive. Because a rejection of funding a proposal. Is actually a vote to diminish the RTM control over the outcomes. If it gets turned down, you have chosen to diminish your control and that's why we put the two thirds in. It needed to be very important to walk away from the opportunity. Of minima of reducing the scale of a building. And having it fit better into our community. A second, I would just like to make a correction. P and Z cannot start charging a development fee to fund this trust without the approval of the BET and the RTM. And that's it. All I have to say because everyone who spoke from the committee, from the special committee was so eloquent. That they've made every single point that I had previously written. Thank you all.
All right, I do have a question. The RTM has no authority to enact land use regulations. And so that last statement, I am. Looking at our Assistant Town Attorney, Amina Ahmad, I don't know. I had not passed her in advance, so I don't know if she's able to verify that. Any fee imposed by P and Z where, where we have no authority over. Land use regulations, would we play a role in approving?
If, if I may, Mr. Moderator, this would not be in the land use reg. It is a municipal, it is money that would go to the, that is part of the municipal till, a fee that would be charged. They are approved, the fees we charge, that the building department charges, all of that is approved. By the BOT and it would BET and it would go through that process. The only thing that is within.
I'm just saying, I don't recall us. Ever being asked to approve fees charged by building department or P and Z, so.
It's a line item in the budget, sir.
Well, our budget is an appropriation. It's not, not an establishment of a fee structure. Ms. Ahmad, can you provide any guidance on? And maybe you can. I know it's unfair to ask, put you on the spot. If the answer is no, that I.
Mr. Moderator, I, I think. When it comes to the Planning and Zoning Commission's authority to establish a fee in lieu. That's solely under the Planning and Zoning Commission's authority. So that's a statutory, it's under eight dash two I of the general statutes. I believe Ms. Albin is referring to, and Ms. Albin can correct me if I'm wrong. The fees that are set, I think, for permits and, and other things that go through planning and zoning. I don't recall seeing that in the budget documents in terms of the RTM actually. Reviewing the schedule of fees, but I could be wrong. I may be missing something there. But I did want to point out that under eight dash two I, fee in lieu. That's under the Planning and Zoning Commission's sole authority.
All right, thank you. That was our final speaker, signed up for this motion to amend offered by Legislative and Rules and BOC.
So I was.
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, this is Frederick Lee. I was actually on the list to speak on this item.
No, you weren't.
Yes, I was. It's on, it's on the list that, that was extended out to everyone. On the website.
Okay, well, there were multiple lists. There's another list for this item.
It's on, it's on the, it's on the RTM website.
All right, you're on the other list and the other list is just in general. Just in general. So we had two lists. We had a list in particular for the motion to amend and for the item.
Yes, I'm on both. Yes, I'm actually, Mr. Moderator, I'm on both.
Sir, excuse me. You don't have the floor. You're not on the list. I'm going to ask the district tabulators to please mark their voting cards. Legislative and Rules. And BOC motion to amend item four. If you are in favor of deleting what is currently in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. Which requires a two thirds vote of the RTM to reject. Any of these fundings over half a million dollars and replacing it with a simple majority, you should vote yes. This is a motion to replace the two thirds with a simple majority. If you want to leave the two thirds, then you should vote no. All right, so we'll start our five minute clock and allow the vote to be taken. Yes, before you do that, thank you. All right, I do have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. There were a total of eight, one, two, three, seven, ten, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Those in favor, two oh seven. Opposed zero, abstaining zero. The consent counter items have carried. We are now voting on the legislative and rules motion to amend item four. All right, I had forgotten, we need the result of this vote before we can continue. So I'm gonna ask Craig Jones, who is our master wizard technician. Has just done an unbelievable job figuring out each meeting and proving our sound systems. This hybrid, as you can imagine, is. A nightmare trying to organize and he's done such a great job. So. We can just take off the clock and. When we have the vote, I ask if the district tabulators could please expedite it, then we will continue. Thank you. All right, we're still waiting on the results from District One, but. It appears that this motion is going to fail. There aren't enough voters in District One to make up the current deficit. So I will continue. And I will announce the final vote when that comes in, but. So. I believe the motion to amend has failed. Further motions. Lucia Jansen, I believe your committee has a motion to address this.
Okay, again, trying to be. Trying to simplify this process. Our second measure in order to. Address some of our concerns was to adopt a sunset clause, which would terminate the trust after six years of the ordinance. If not revised with the removal. As we often do with new substantive ordinances such as the waste ordinance we have on the call tonight. The sunset clause is a reasonable pause to review that the ordinance meets the goals that was intended. The six years was decided because we wanted to give the fund sufficient time to gather. The expected money that's to be raised and projects to be identified. We had talked about five years. We had talked about seven years and six was.
It's not before us yet. All right, so I received nothing about this particular motion. I need currently the exact language of your motion. What is, what are you amending? Where is the amendment going and what does it say?
Amend the ordinance to add a six year sunset clause. The vote was nine to one.
No, but you, I need specific language that is added. We're not going to draft this. You have, you have proposed, you have to have drafted the language and proposed exactly. We're not sending this to a legislative. Aid who's going to draft it for us. I need specific language. I cannot accept it. That's what I'm telling you. You're just saying generally, conceptually, I want a six year sunset. Okay, where does it go and what does it say?
The motion would be at the end of the ordinance and it would be clearly stating that there is a sunset clause very similar to the waste ordinance. After a six year.
Turn to the waste ordinance and tell me what it said.
I did not bring my paperwork up here. I have to.
See, our problem is we have no online speaker list for this. We have no language. And that's not how we can proceed here. Do we have the result now? The result of the vote on the legislative and rules BOC motion to put to take out the two thirds vote requirement. Those in favor, eighty seven, opposed one seventeen, abstaining four. The motion to amend has failed. Mr. Bergweger, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Can you offer any help as Chair of our Leg saving and Rules Committee to the BOC on this?
I would say. I'm looking at the ordinance.
On page fifteen of the call, we find language for the. Sunset on the waste.
Oh, yes, I'm looking at section six, three, three, zero of the. Housing trust fund, make a new section, section six hyphen three, three. Two, three, one.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Where are you?
The last, the last section in the. Housing ordinance is section six hyphen three, three, zero. The next one should be.
I thought it was six, three, three, one. Interpretation.
Oh, there it is. Okay, make it six, three, three, two. Sunset clause. And the waste. Let's see. Well, I don't, I, I only have the clause, section nine, that's fine.
But what, what, what was proposed to be taken out is. This, you know, there. The sunset there was only on certain paragraph, but shall cease to be effective on a given date. Unless sooner extended or amended by action of the representative. Tell me, Ms. Jansen, do you have language? You're welcome. There you go.
Thank you, Moderator Byrne. All right, so the entire section. Thank you, Moderator Byrne. All right, so the entire section shall cease to be effective on October first twenty twenty seven unless sooner amended or extended by the RTM.
All right, so Budget Review is moving to amend it to add and will take Mr. Bergweger's suggestion to add a section six dash three, three, two sunset clause. This ordinance shall cease to be effective on October one, twenty twenty seven, unless sooner extended or amended by action of the representative town meeting. Discussion on that motion to amend. Do you have anything further to say? All right, as I said, we have no sign up list. Anyone here? Like to comment on that? Anyone in Zoom land? Margarita Albin, do you have any comment? On adding a six year sunset?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay, you said Mr. Bergweger, Mr. Bergweger?
Yes. I'm opposed. I think it makes no sense. As said before, if if this is working well, we will know. Every year we are going to report from the chairman of the board or chairperson of the board. If it's not working, we can address it. We have six, six years to work on that. In the meantime, we don't know how long it's going to take to build up the fund, but you don't want to have a fund that's beginning to peak, beginning to generate good sums of money and the developers who might be interested in going forward will be reluctant to do so because they know the ordinance is going to disappear in a year. And I just don't see any benefit to the town. You you'll be able to, the RTM will be able to deal with whatever might be need need correcting and further adjustment. And also, this is just it's just not a good idea to tell the workforce, people in our town that we're not capable of putting together an ordinance that works. So I think it's a giving it up. Without it, without trying.
Thank you. Further discussion on the BOC motion to add a sunset provision. I'm sorry. Mr. Messers.
So you can hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, I've sat in the General Assembly for three years in Hartford. We've heard the passion and the interest on affordable housing. I think Margarita has done an extraordinary job in crafting a provision that may get us to the point of working towards that affordable housing goal in the proper context for the income levels in Fairfield County. Something that's attractive to the builders and something that's important for our town. I think when I hear our concern about local control, I think we want to move ahead with a firm and instructful commitment. And I think a sunset clause sends a mixed message about our commitment to deal with affordable housing. And while I expect we will modify the provision of affordable housing in the future, potentially, we will be able to find a way, as Margarita mentioned, to deal with assessments on development that help to fund that affordable housing trust fund. I would be loath to have to walk into the General Assembly and explain that we've made a commitment to affordable housing for six years. So I urge the membership to reject the amendment for a sunset provision. I think it it ties my hands and make the job, the job in the General Assembly that much more difficult. Thank you.
Further discussion on this motion to add a sunset clause. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards? BOC motion to add sunset clause to item four. Again, we're going to have to wait for the results. So I ask our district tabulators to please try and expedite the voting so that we can continue with the meeting. So we will not put up a clock on this. But we will play some tunes. All right, we do have the result of the vote on the sunset amendment. Those in favor, fifty four, opposed one forty five, abstaining six. That motion to amend has failed. All right, that now brings us to item four on the merits. And let us see, so this is the second reading, so we can take our final vote tonight and dispose of it. All right, and we do have a sign up list for this. And Mr. Lee, because of what happened, you are number one on the list. Frederick Lee, to be followed by Brooks Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, fellow RTM members. I come before you today to ask for your support in voting yes for call item number four, the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Greenwich has a long history in supporting affordable housing and in fact would actually meet and exceed the housing percentages mandated by the state of Connecticut. Unfortunately, based on the current legislation, we are only given partial credit for our affordable housing stock and need approximately twelve hundred fifty additional units to be compliant. The downside of missing the state mandate is that the town loses the ability to zone housing and maintain what makes Greenwich special compared to urban areas. Missing the mandate allows developers to create sky high projects without regard to the neighborhood housing in the quest to make the project economically viable for profit. In addition, in order to meet the mandate from the state, we would have to add anywhere from four thousand to six thousand units to qualify if we rely on developers to get Greenwich to the mandated percentage. Huge units and increased traffic and population congestion would become the norm. Everything that we love and appreciate of Greenwich would be a thing of the past. Having the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and working with the Greenwich Housing Authority would alleviate this by increasing our affordable housing stock, prevent overdevelopment and overpopulation, maintain home rule where Greenwich will be able to decide what works for Greenwich and allow the units to be created to be used for town employees who currently are unable to live in Greenwich. I hope that you will vote yes in support of the Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you for your consideration.
Brooks Harris to be followed by Stephen Rubin.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, I also worked on the Affordable Housing Trust. Now I'm just speaking for myself here. Eight thirty G is a real problem for us. I mean, no beating around the bush. This is a very punitive law that's going to require us to add between four and six thousand units and it's going to strain the capacity of the town. And basically, we have to figure out how to deal with that ourselves. More traffic, more schools, all the other services, we've got to deal with that. So I'm very supportive of this Affordable Housing Trust because this at least allows us to cut down the scope of that a little. But as we vote yes for this and start to address this problem, let's please not think that we're going to make this problem manageable or easy or that it's not going to affect us too much. This law is going to cause major problems for us. If this trust goes through and it scales up, maybe we cut the number of units we need from six thousand to four thousand or from five thousand to thirty five hundred, but we're still going to have to add a ton of housing and we're going to have to figure out how to manage that and how to pay for it. So in conclusion, I say support this measure. There'll be other measures that we're going to have to support as well. But at the end of the day, the only way we're going to be able to really deal with this is up in Hartford and we'll need a little bit more than, you know, I'm doing everything I can. You guys should support me. We really need to change this to be sensible anyway. But let's vote for this right now. Thank you.
No, I think I said Stephen Rubin. Stephen Rubin to be followed by Margarita Albin.
Yes, hi, I had a speech written, which I'm going to skip. I'm just going to get to the guts of it and that is please support this. This is a generational vote. It's so important to the town. So like my colleagues all said, please support this ordinance and and thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Margarita Albin to be followed by Peter Berg.
It's not allowing me.
We can hear you.
Okay, it just didn't let me start the video. Good evening, Mr. Moderator, once again, and members of the RTM. I am going to pass. So many others have expressed sentiments eloquently. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg to be followed by Scott Calb.
Good evening. Good evening again, fellow members. So I also urge you to vote in favor of this. Even if you were not happy that we didn't adopt an amendment, those two amendments, had they passed, I still would have voted for this trust and and I would urge you to vote for them even those, even though the amendments weren't adopted. I would point out that eight thirty G, the state law, is not what's before us tonight. So don't vote no because you don't like eight thirty G. And don't think that eight thirty G is something new that the state has imposed. Eight thirty G was adopted in nineteen eighty nine, so it's been on the books for thirty two years. And finally, one of the facts, one of the frequently asked questions that we posted, asked, it's actually number thirteen, asked the question, is the Housing Trust Fund consistent with our town plan of conservation and development? And the answer to that is yes. In fact, the the town plan of conservation and development specifically calls for the Housing Trust Fund. It's on page fifty two and the town plan of conservation, town plan of conservation and development was adopted by the RTM by an overwhelming vote in November of twenty nineteen. Thank you.
Scott Calb to be followed by State Senator Ryan Fazio.
Good evening, everybody. Scott Calb, District Seven. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say, I'll keep it short. Look, without the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, developers will need to do larger scale projects to reach their economic targets. And the town would also have very little influence over the size and scope of such projects. We've already been advised that the courts may be unfavorably disposed towns that object to housing projects, which meet affordable housing guidelines, even if local communities object to them. Especially as deadlines approach to meet state mandated targets. This is going to be an important tool for us and it's a great private sector initiative. I'm proud of the work that's been done on a bipartisan basis of a lot of our leadership in town, including many members of the RTM to hammer out this ordinance. I urge you all to support the Affordable Housing Trust and and that we should all be getting on with figuring out how best we can raise money for the trust fund and begin the hard job of expanding our affordable housing stock. Thank you.
Ryan Fazio to be followed by Maria Caricella.
Good evening. I just want to very briefly commend all the hard work that Katie, Margarita, Alexis, Brooks, and everyone else on the Special Committee did on this trust fund. I think, as Brooks said, it's a very elegant and effective measure in order to assert more local input and discretion over planning and development in the face of eight thirty G. Eight thirty G is a problem no matter what, but this is the best alternative we have in front of us for asserting more local control. In the long run, we do need to make alterations to eight thirty G at the state level and I'm happy to work with any of our local stakeholders and experts in order to advance that in a sensible and bipartisan manner. But until then, this is a great alternative to protect our town and its interests and I are driven to vote for it.
Thank you. Maria Caricella to be followed by Mary Flynn. Unmute, please. She's not there. All right, why don't we move on if she comes back. Mary Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Mary Flynn from District Twelve and first thing I'd like to say is that I am one hundred percent in favor of affordable housing, but not this way. This is a terrible road to take. We should not be paying off builders to coerce them into building what we need. As Alexis said, there are other options to explore. I don't like biting the hand that feeds us, but this is not a trow that we should freed from. We have so many builders, landlords and real estate investors tax deductions now that the whole system is already skewered. Making it worse by sanctioning this is just not a good idea. People say it's private money, but we are sanctioning this, providing a pathway for the future. As we just heard, in the future, it could be both public and private money. We need to nip this in the bud. Let's do it right. I've asked for but never gotten the numbers on what affordable and what low income housing we already have. I heard that much of it is not counted. Let's get it counted. Some don't count because they haven't been updated recently enough. Upgrade them now. We must need to do it. Housing owned by private schools should be included. It's all too shrouded. We need to know the what, when, where and how of our housing stock. All of that information is knowable. Is someone in charge of that? No one wants to be fined thirty million dollars. And it would be good to have adequate affordable housing and not to pay fines. Sanctioning paying off builders is not the way to do it. I am one hundred percent in favor of affordable housing, but this is not a solution. This is a problem in the making. I urge us not to go down this road and to vote against this housing trust. Thank you.
Did we find Maria Caricella? No. All right, Maria Caricella, if you would like to speak, this is your chance. Please unmute your microphone and you have the floor. Nothing. All right, that's the final speaker on this. Will the district tabulators please mark your voting cards? Item number four. And proceed to pull your delegation. We will put up a timer, five minutes and then move on to item five. All right, that is our five minute mark. We will continue on at this point. All right, item number five now comes before us. Wait till we get to the debate portion. Patricia Sesto, Director of Environmental Affairs.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Resolve that the Conservation Commission is authorized to accept twenty five thousand dollars from the Greenwich Botanical Society, a five oh one C three corporation for the purpose of raising public awareness on the value of pollinators by way of a pollinator pathway mural on East Putnam Avenue and is supporting educational material.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. May we hear the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with our Finance Committee, Michael Basham, Chair. Do we have Mr. Basham? Should be a panelist, no? Where he could unmute himself? What?
I can go.
I'm sorry, what are you telling me? Well, is he here now? Well, is he here now? It's all that matters. Are you here, Mr. Basham?
I'm here, Mr. Moderator.
All right, this is the report on item five.
All right, thank you. Myra Clockenbrink, a member of the town Sustainability Committee and co-chair of the Pollinator Pathway, joined our committee to discuss the item and shared a picture of what the completed mural would look like. One question for the committee was why a New York artist was selected for the mural instead of a local one. She said they did interview local artists, but thought that the New York artist they selected was the most qualified based on all of the various presentations that were made. In response to another question about what happens if the RTM rejects the gift, she said the remaining gift funds would be returned, the project wall would be painted over. The committee voted six-six on the item with districts one, two, five, seven and nine voting no. They thought the RTM should have been asked to approve the gift as the charter requires before the project began. There were concerns about opening the door to multiple groups wanting to paint murals on town property. And a result of the town and as a result, the town needed to codify the detailed approval process for all the proposed mural projects. We did vote six-six. Item failed.
All right, thank you. Michael Spilo, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Public Works took up item five. Present were Commissioner Seabird, Deputy Commissioner, excuse me, Michael of DPW, Patricia Sesto of the Conservation Commission, and Ms. Clockenbrink of Pollinator Pathways. First, we discussed a motion regarding whether or not pollinators or climate change were on the agenda and warranted extensive discussion. After consideration, the committee voted seven-five-zero sustaining the decision that pollinators and climate change were not on the agenda. Committee then took up discussion of the item. Miss Sesto indicated that a member of the Conservation Commission suggested the project. She indicated that the process, that a process was followed that included extensive search for suitable artists. Miss Sesto said that a decision was reached that local artists and high school students were not sufficiently skilled. Miss Sesto said that it was decided that an artist from Chile with extensive mural painting experience would be used and funds were raised to pay the artist as well as to cover other costs related to the project. Miss Sesto indicated that while funds were not at hand at start, full funding was now in hand and that this funding would be sufficient to cover removal or repair of the mural. Miss Sesto indicated that she approached first selectman Camillo and that he gave the go-ahead for the project. Miss Sesto provided us with an unsigned MOU between first selectmen and Conservation Commission, allowing for temporary relocation of the CT Transit-owned bus shelter and also allowing the town to request removal of the mural, but only after two years. The MOU also committed the town to treat or remove graffiti. Miss Sesto also described at some length and detail the role of pollinators and their importance. She indicated that the artists had agreed to involve students in the creation of the mural and to teach them about the skills required for painting on walls. Miss Sesto indicated the project would include a quick response matrix barcode known as a QR code that would direct people to the Pollinator Pathways Organization website where they could learn about pollinators and the work of the organization. Miss Sesto indicated also that there was some plan to incorporate plantings with the bus shelter. On questioning for members of the committee, Miss Sesto indicated that she considered the group named Pollinator Pathways an ad hoc subcommittee of the Conservation Commission. However, Miss Sesto indicated the Conservation Commission never took a vote on the mural project, nor was there any vote on creating an ad hoc subcommittee. Miss Sesto indicated that there was no public hearing and no formal outreach to neighbors, though neighbors near the wall agreed to allow use of their water. Miss Sesto could not confirm whether the town legal department had reviewed the MOU. After extensive discussion, our committee voted four-eight-zero against the project. Members voting no indicated they were concerned the process was insufficient, that neighbors were not consulted, that no hearings were held and the town property was being encumbered without approval from the RTM. Members voting no were concerned that work had commenced without RTM approval of the gift. Members were concerned that this could set a precedent constraining the town to accept other projects, other similar projects, under similar constraints. Others were concerned that the aesthetics and the about the aesthetics and the appropriateness of wall art to the town. And lastly, that funds raised were potentially insufficient. Mr. Moderator, Mr. Amundsen of my committee has requested to make a motion from the floor to postpone this item indefinitely. If you could recognize him for the motion at the appropriate time or allow me to make the motion on his behalf.
Now, we have a process here. If we get to him, I will do that.
If not, I so move, sir.
Well, you don't have the floor for that purpose. Did your committee move to postpone indefinitely?
No.
All right. With the report of our Transportation Committee. Is Kimberly's? She live here? Or online?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Hi. On item number five, the Transportation Committee met Tuesday, September twenty-first at seven PM via Zoom. Districts one and two were absent. On item number five, members discussed the mural on Post Road outside Millbrook. Many members appreciated the art, but questioned the process. To approve the project, financing could establish the precedent. The town projects need not be approved by neighbors or a committee before starting. Some members were concerned that other murals might pop up all over town. One member felt this type of art could open the space up for graffiti. The question of whether to leave it as is or paint over it was also discussed. One member reported that she had seen murals in towns in Maine and that one town had established an approval process through local planning and zoning. This main mural was then financed through public-private partnerships. Another concern raised was who would be in charge of cleaning and maintaining the mural? The vote was two yes, District five and nine voting yes, eight no, and zero abstaining with two absent. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we now have heard the reports of our committees that consider this and we will now move to discussion on the item. I will tell you that our online signup list has generated approximately fifty interested speakers. And there are additional people who have showed up in person wanting to speak. Obviously, the hour is, you know, we're ten-thirty. We still have other items to go.
Mr. Moderator, excuse me, am I supposed to be giving the committee report now for the District eleven or no?
Oh, I forgot. Yes, I'm sorry. Susan Fahy, Chair of District eleven. Thank you.
Okay, hold on. Let me see if I can undo my screen. All right, my video is not working, but anyway, I'll just give the report. District eleven took up this item. We had a long and lively discussion regarding the acceptance of twenty-five thousand dollars in exchange for allowing the Pollinator Pathway group, which came to us through the Greenwich Conservation Commission, to erect a Pollinator Pathway mural at the intersection of Overlook and the Post Road. At our meeting, we had Myra Clockenbrink, a Greenwich resident who is part of the, who is part of the local ad hoc committee for the Pollinator Pathway, and she stated is an environmentally friendly group who wishes to make the next generation aware of environmental issues. Concerns were brought up about the art with a message being erected in the future of our town on walls, buildings or roadways. Someone brought up the term creeping neuralization, something I'd never heard of. Others shared concerns regarding public art with no current policy. Another stated that all art when using public property should come before the RTM, and they believe that paying for outdoor leases or use of public property falls under the RTM oversight. Another still believed this was not our sandbox and that we had more important issues before us. We landed on a conversation about the library's policy as we have the former president of their board in our district. She read to us some language that I thought might be helpful to share tonight. The community bulletin boards may not be used for personal, sorry, for personal, for-profit, commercial or partisan political purposes as determined by the library's Information Management Services, ISM. Community bulletin boards are not intended to be forums for the exercise of free speech. And the ISM or relevant branch manager will determine the location, manner and duration of posting any of these materials on their community bulletin boards. This is some language we thought the first selectmen might want to look at. When we discussed how to help the town with future decisions and we discussed a sense of a meeting resolution from District eleven. Meeting resolution that was first seconded and voted nine-eight-one. Those who voted no mostly felt that we had a process in place and that the pollinator group all went through it. Some thought it would be hard to verbalize a standard through the RTM somer, but others felt that it might be overreaching. However, those that voted for it felt that we needed a more concrete process to determine art on public spaces. And D one, while first wanting to let everyone on the whole know that we recommend to vote to authorize the acceptance of twenty-five thousand tonight, we wanted to put in language when acceptable for a somer asking the selectmen for policy, and I'll do that whenever you believe it's ready, moderator.
Well, that is not on our agenda, so before we can consider it, we'd have to have a motion to consider a non-agenda item and vote two-thirds by a two-thirds vote just to take that up. So we'll leave that, we'll leave that until we've disposed of item five, at least. All right, so as I was saying, we have a list that has attracted fifty speakers. Mr. Tom Broadhurst, Chair of District Five, has asked to be recognized.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we limit debate on this item to a total of one hour. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to limit debate on item five for a period of one hour. A motion to limit debate is itself not debatable and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. So at this point, I am going to call for the vote. In the first instance, we'll try the raised hand method. Otherwise, we'll resort to a record vote. So again, only RTM members may vote. Ms. Bulgares, will you count those in the room, please? All hands down. Those in favor of limiting debate on item five to one hour, please now raise your hand.
What do you got?
All right, so that is a total of a hundred and thirty. We had a hundred and sixteen on Zoom and fourteen in the room. Please, all hands down. All those opposed to the limit of one hour on this, please raise your hand now. Ms. Bulgares, again?
What you got? All right, thirty-one and two is thirty-three, so that's one sixty-three. One sixty-three times two divided by three is one oh eight, and we had one thirty. So we do have a two-thirds majority. The motion to limit total time to one hour has passed. Mr. Broadhurst?
Mr. Moderator, I move that each speaker be limited to two minutes.
All right, I have a feeling there's not going to be too much opposition to that. Is there any opposition? We can adopt. First of all, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to limit debate per individual to two minutes on item five. Is there any objection to that? All right, we will adopt that upon unanimous consent. So all speakers, you know, and we'll try and, if you can quickly, because we only have an hour. And our start time will be around ten-thirty-three. So first speaker is going to be James Harper, to be followed by Ryan Bernstein. Mr. Harper.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
How wonderful. Well, thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening to all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is James Harper. I'm a Greenwich resident and I'm attending this evening to ask for your support for the Pollinator Pathway mural project. What motivates me and many others to support this mural project is to create a beautiful work of public art to be enjoyed by all Greenwich residents that also has a valuable educational component regarding the importance of pollinators and their habitats. Thousands of residents and visitors pass by the proposed location every day, including myself. Most would agree that it would be a significant aesthetic enhancement to the Post Road across from Greenwich High School. All funding has already been raised and it will cost nothing to the town of Greenwich. This includes the necessary funds to maintain and upkeep the mural. The plan and budget are already in place. Many people and organizations, as well as town and state departments, have collaborated to bring this project forward, including many Greenwich High School students. I believe this is an example of positive community action at its best. In conclusion, I hope you will support the approval of this mural project by accepting this donation. Thank you very much.
All right, before calling on the next speaker, I will point out that of the fifty signed up, most of them, probably ninety percent are for this. And speakers are certainly free to adopt remarks of prior speakers, pass, you know, whatever, to try and allow the greatest number of people to participate. So next speaker is Ryan Bernstein, to be followed by Jonathan Perlow.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the opportunity to speak tonight. We are experiencing a mass extinction, entire ecosystems collapsing, air pollution ravaging entire communities, pollinators dying. I cannot bear to witness such atrocity one day longer. I speak tonight as a high school student. It is high school students like me that are set to benefit the most from this mural. This mural will help inspire the young, brilliant minds of the Greenwich community to engage in environmental action to save our suffering environment, all the while providing free, practical artistic experience to Greenwich high schoolers as they learn the intricacies behind creating a powerful artistic statement. All of these benefits are at no cost to the Greenwich community. I truly cannot see the issue here. If we want to have control over the proliferation of public art in Greenwich, then we should codify procedures for it. But we should not punish the Conservation Commission or the Pollinator Pathway project for the lack of an existing policy. This is the first mural in town and the awkward process of part of the growing pains, not a nefarious act to shut out the RTM. This concern over setting a precedent is at best a short-sighted attempt to prevent the Greenwich town from promoting youth environmental action. We need to trust our first selectman's office to make decisions like these for us. Otherwise, the process is too unwieldy and nothing gets done. Art is subjective and it is up to the first selectman's office to weigh whether the proposed art serves the community at large. Throughout the complex and rigorous process this mural went through, the mural did receive a State Department of Transportation overlay. Reflecting on this mural dilemma brings to mind the Edmund Burke quote, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." As a high school student, I look around this Zoom call tonight, my young, impressionable eyes glancing, perceiving, learning from the leaders of our town. This is so much more than a mural. This is our future. Think about your children, your children's children.
Thank you. Jonathan Perlow to be followed by Lucia Jansen.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry. I am speaking in favor of item five. As I learned more about the controversy that erupted last June around the mural project, I felt a very Alice in Wonderland moment. Would you tell me, please, which way I ought to go from here? Alice asked during her adventure into the absurd. The Cheshire Cat replies, "That depends a good deal on where you want to get to." I submit the place we want to get to is a town that beautifies its public spaces, a town that creatively uses art to educate us on important topics, a town that finds opportunities to engage youth in experiences that let them build skills they're unlikely to get otherwise, and a town that encourages civic engagement by its residents. The mural project achieves all of these objectives. A lot has been said about the untenable precedent that would be made if we vote to approve the project. For the sake of exercising its authority, the RTM stopped the project. Even if the RTM votes to approve the gift, how is that an invitation to run afoul of our oversight in the future? The precedent I fear the RTM is setting is that no good deed goes unpunished. I believe in process as much as anyone, but I also believe in flexibility, adjusting to circumstances and not creating mountains out of molehills. In good faith, the Conservation Commission, the first selectmen and town In good faith, the Conservation Commission, the first selectmen, and town employees relied on Resolution 18 in this year's budget. They went through a thoughtful and rigorous vetting process. At this point, we should have the humility to give the project its blessing and then step out of the way. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't call attention to remarks that I consider to be very insensitive, indeed racist, made by members of this body during the mural discussion at last week's Public Works meeting. One person said, "We're not the Bronx or Brooklyn, we're Greenwich." Another person said, "Do they want a mural of people starving in Africa?" If we aspire to eradicate racism, expressions like these should not be acceptable and should not pass without being called out. Thank you very much.
Lucia Jansen, to be followed by Joseph Kantorski, who I don't see on the list. And if he's not here, Ali Giorci.
Good evening. I'm speaking as a resident who lives within the mural area. This is a big deal. An outdoor mural on town property wall has never been done before. This mural will set a precedent for other town property murals. It has been confirmed by the Director of Environmental Affairs after the proposal was put before the first selectman for approval. Not one public meeting or hearing took place during the entire process with the property owners, the neighborhood, the Greenwich High School art students, or other local artists, or the general public. I have also discovered two days ago, a 200 square foot garden just east of the mural is part of this project and not previously disclosed in the explanatory comments, and has no description, rendering, maintenance, and costs, nor again, public hearings on the matter. I have also learned from the town administrator, there is a new art installation policy in the works in the next few weeks that this mural had no reference to, this new policy. Due to the delay, the contract has been canceled with the agency representing the artist, and there is no consequence to the commission. It is still not confirmed that proper indemnification and insurance has been obtained for the past or future contracts with the muralists. This item should be rejected until a public hearing is held and full neighborhood input is allowed. Further, in parallel, there should be a formal policy be adopted, and new town art installation policy should be included. Please vote no on item five and get this right, given the consequence of future subsequent murals. Thank you.
Is Joseph Kantorski with us? No, Ali Giorci, to be followed by Isabel Harper.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and fellow RTM members. I'm Allison Giorci, District 1, and I'm voting yes for item five. I strongly support the mural project because it speaks to my values as someone who cares deeply about prioritizing and protecting the vibrancy of the town's natural habitats, ecosystems, and pollinators. But instead of speaking to these values and the process as planned, I'm using my time to challenge the comments made by a Greenwich resident regarding the mural. I sat down to my desk this morning and opened my RTM inbox to find an email from this resident and was appalled by the racist implication of his message.
All right, I'm going to interrupt you. We do not allow reading of comments of others. You're entitled to tell us what you think, but, and this is a Robert's Rule about requests to read papers, so to the extent there is a request, it is denied. Do you have anything further to say?
Okay, so my response to this individual's question is yes, absolutely. This is exactly the image I want to project as representative of our town, and I believe the majority of our community does as well. Should this mural be approved, it will serve as a bright and colorful and proud statement that as one community, Greenwich celebrates public art, creativity, nature, beauty, and yes, diversity of all kinds. Please join me in voting yes on item five. Thank you.
Is Isabel Harper with us? I know there was a James who spoke. Is there an, oh, you're here, great, thank you. You have the floor.
Hi, I'm Isabel Harper. I am a student at Greenwich High School. I'm a senior, and I'm the leader of the Environmental Action Club. And I just really want to convey the message of how much the students at GHS support this mural. We all are in full support of it, and we have been fighting for it for a long time. And in regards to, like, people saying that we didn't ask the neighbors about whether we can put this mural up or not, GHS is really the biggest neighbor of this mural, and we are the ones that are facing the mural, and we're the ones that see it every day, going into school and leaving school. And to me, I think that every student at GHS will be so inspired and empowered by this mural. This is something that really is so important to us and to our future. You know, encouraging people to learn about pollinators and about native plants is something that is so valuable to members of our community, especially students. And to me, it's just surprising that anybody would be against this because it's just like the most beautiful piece of art ever. It's, it's so, it's just so empowering, as I said. And I just think it's something that is going to benefit everybody. There's really nothing wrong with it, in my opinion, and in the opinions of all the other students at GHS. And we all also really want to participate in creating it. And a lot of the art students at GHS are also going to, we're going to help the painter of the mural to paint it, and they were going to be supportive in the process. And obviously, that was stopped because the mural was halted for, for this. But I just wanted to say how important it is to all of us that you guys really listen to our voices and, and you guys in your vote know that all the students at GHS really support this, and we really want to see this passed. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience in joining us and waiting to address us. All right, Robert Moss, to be followed by Michael Spilo.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. My name is Robert Moss, and I serve on District 8. As a graduate of Greenwich High School, where I was fortunate enough to take many classes in their amazing art department. I'm a professional nature photographer, as well as working for the Arctic Ice Project. So I think I'm qualified to speak on this matter. I urge you all to vote in favor of this fantastic opportunity to enhance a very bleak section of the post road. It was a mold and graffiti-covered wall, which was always depressing to walk by as a student. Even in its partially finished state, it is miles better than the eyesore that was there before. There are no GHS art classes that teach about murals, and this will provide students a unique opportunity to work with the murals. It is amazing that he's willing to share his knowledge with our community. The donors of this mural acted in good faith, thinking that they had followed the entire town approval process. As soon as they found out it needed RTM approval, work halted, and it was put before us. Refusing a gift out of spite for a misunderstanding is unfair to those who will enjoy it. This will discourage anyone from donating anything to the town. Say goodbye to public and private partnerships. Why would anyone want to subject themselves to this process ever again? It would be a damn shame for us to lose this amazing opportunity. We should be thanking the Pollinator Pathways Group for their hard work, not torturing them and wasting everyone's time with nonsensical excuses. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Michael Spilo, to be followed by Joel Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, I've gone back and forth on this issue, and I generally like the mural, but I have many of the same reservations about process. I also find the rhetoric which says that if you oppose this, that, or the other project, you're either a racist or against the environment, is getting very tired. That said, in addition to all the concerns regarding process, the mural is slated to have an associated QR code which directs people to the website controlled by an outside group called Pollinator Pathways. Excuse me, this website includes a donate button which directs donors to another organization named the Norwalk River Watershed Association. Delving a bit further, I found this Norwalk organization's most recent info on GuideStar is from 2011. There's no information about how the donated funds are used, or where they, to whom they go. I believe it's problematic for the town to give town property allowing a prominent endorsement of these two organizations, which have no track record and about whom we know so little. Established local organizations like Greenwich Tree Conservancy or the Bartlett Arboretum will be more appropriate partners in producing educational material for high school students. Besides the appropriateness of supporting fundraising by little-known organizations from other towns, there is an issue with security. A website that is being promoted by, by the town, especially near a school, needs to be secure both in terms of privacy and personal information and identity. And websites are notoriously easy to hack. So while the mural's aesthetics and purpose are benign, and even potentially an improvement over a concrete wall, I believe these issues make the project well-intentioned but hastily done and without sufficient consideration. I think we need to know more about the organizations involved, and the project is ill-considered and rushed as it stands and should not go forward in its current form. Thank you.
Was that a hacker speaking from his experience?
Absolutely.
I have the result of the vote on item four, which was the Affordable Housing Trust. Those in favor, 176; opposed, 22; abstaining, 5. The Housing Trust ordinance is carried. Joel Dawson, to be followed by Lucy Von Brockel.
Yes, I'm Joel Dawson, a local beekeeper in town. Thank you for having me. I was asked by the Pollinator Pathway people to speak here, as I've spoken with them on many occasions. In fact, I'm going there this weekend to speak to some Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts. And I'm called on now and then to speak at a lot of local schools about beekeeping. So I'm not here to speak about process or why or why not we should have the wall, except for the fact that it is, as someone said, a very important issue. The bees and many other pollinators in our life do a lot to help us live. As Albert Einstein said, "If bees disappear from the surface of this globe, then man will only have four years left to live." 75% of the food that you eat off of your plate comes from pollinators. Bees, honeybees that I take care of, and probably about 50 other beekeepers in Greenwich, man over 200 hives in Greenwich that help promote bees, promote the need for bees, and try to keep them alive. We lose over 45% of our bees every year. So we need all the exposure and all the knowledge that we can get out there. And if this brings any bit of person to pay, pay attention, I was very inspired by the high school student that spoke in person and online, that they are all excited. The youth is very important to get excited. I go to grade schools and middle schools and speak to kids to remind them that 98% of our vitamin C is reliant by pollinators. 70% of vitamin A is reliant on pollinators. 55% of our folic acid is reliant on pollinators. Our honeybees do 80% of the pollinating. And besides that, we have bumblebees, hummingbirds, wasps, and even bats do pollination. I'm probably running out of time. I just think it's very important for this to be out there for more people to learn about honeybees and the need for pollination. Thank you for your time, and I support, support the mural.
Lucy Von Brockel, to be followed by Julie Deschamps.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, the town would benefit from a policy and process for handling gifts of public art, but that shouldn't stop us from accepting the gift before us. It certainly hasn't in the past. In fact, Greenwich has accepted dozens of gifts of public art over the years without having a policy in place. From New York artist Lila Katson's pre-opposed sculpture in Roger Sherman Baldwin Park to California artist Deborah Butterfield's versus Valentine and Orson at Bruce Park, to works by local artists Douglas Moore and Alfred Durst that live in our schools and libraries, there are substantial pieces of public art throughout the town that have enriched our lives and culture that were approved by this body. So what message would refusing this gift actually send? I recall members of this body worrying on more than a few occasions that when we challenge appointments, it discourages volunteers from considering these roles in the future. If you subscribe to that thinking, you should consider that the same would apply to donors. Let's not refuse a gift of art that has involved a good faith effort by a number of people, town employees, committees, state DOT. I was fortunate to work at the Metropolitan Museum of Art for a number of years and was intimately involved in the acceptance of gifts of art in my department. Today, I praise gifts of art to institutions like the Met for donors seeking tax deductions. With any gift, even those rare gifts that are refused, every effort is made to make it easy for donors and to reward their generosity with gratitude. I have never seen donors have to go through what the proponents of this item have, and for what. I have listened to the debate over this item and cannot identify any cost that outweighs the benefits. Please join me in voting yes to approve this wonderful gift. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Deschamps, to be followed by Teresa Brown-Cutson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Julie Deschamps. As a volunteer for the Traveling Arts Program at Greenwich Public Schools for many years, I witnessed how students' experiences with public art in this community impact their lives and broaden their horizons. In the Traveling Arts Program, each grade is taught about an artwork around a specific theme. And the theme for fifth grade focused specifically on public art in Greenwich, which is found in every corner of our town. Our students light up when they recognize a work of art in their neighborhood and are eager to talk about their impressions and interactions. The Yogi Sculpture in Byron Park is a teachable moment about civic responsibility. The eagle statue at Greenwich Point invites a conversation about environmental stewardship and the importance of species protection and responsible conservation management. The towering red borealis near the train station spurs the imagination. Our public art inspires our students and the larger community to probe the world around us, their imaginations, and even their values. The Pollinator mural would have an equal impact on our residents transforming an unsightly wall into a colorful work of beauty and intrigue. The mural, which will be viewed by thousands each day, including our high school students just across the street, will be, will also serve as an educational tool, relating the importance of biodiversity and pollinators to our existence, as beekeeper Dawson noted, and highlighting the need to protect and support species under threat. I ask you to support the Pollinator Pathway mural project and bring to completion this public artwork by a world-renowned muralist with a critical message to the Greenwich community about sustainability, beauty, and the power of art. Thank you.
Teresa Brown-Cutson, to be followed by Brian Rainey. Is she there? All right, you have the floor. Teresa Brown-Cutson.
My name is Teresa Brown-Cutson, and I support the completion of the mural project on Putnam Avenue. In my role as Chairwoman of Greenwich Community Gardens, I have two points to share. First, we now maintain three sizable community gardens in this town where people grow organic food for their families, for neighbor-to-neighbor, and for the residents of Nathaniel Witherell. I assure you, we need all the help we can get in sustaining pollinators, who in turn sustain local plants and our crop output. We have beehives, we have developed pollinator-attracting areas in all of our gardens, and yet, much more can be done if residents will plant some of the right plants and add to the food sources for the pollinators we are dependent upon. The mural project will educate more residents and encourage them to do this, understanding that it is not hard, it is not expensive, and it knits our community closer when more residents become stewards of our shared environment. Second, it is within our community capability to teach every child coming up through the schools now to not only care about climate and environmental health, but to be knowledgeable and active. The mural project is inviting young and creative minds. It demonstrates civic action. It will reward curiosity with better understanding. It will be an improvement over a dirty and uninspiring cement wall. Lastly, as a resident, I'm proud to live in a town that maintains and pursues the plan of conservation and development. A completed mural will be a visual demonstration of the commitment of our plan of conservation and development, of our dedicated Conservation Commission, of the Sustainability Council, and the Pollinator Pathways. To say that Greenwich is going to become a destination of a world-class public art tells me we are ready for creative and colorful murals that depict what we care about and what we envision for those who will follow us. what we envision for those who will follow us. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Rainey to be followed by Louisa Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Rainey. I had no objection to this, this mural and the message, and I want to emphasize two words there: "I" and "this." Other murals, other messages could be troublesome. I was particularly troubled, though, when I was in our district meetings and started finding all of the, the things that were missing that we needed to know about this. And I continue to be dumbstruck by that here tonight. Mr. Spilo's point about the QR code going to a fundraiser, Ms. Jansen's point about a garden, never brought up. In our district, I heard about a memorandum of understanding, which was not provided until afterwards. I keep hearing references to a contract or agreement presumably with Botanical Society, also not provided. It's difficult to, to form a valid opinion on some of these things, these things without information. We've all heard there's no policy. Also in our district, we heard about the extensive process that this has gone through. I would suggest that that process was ad hoc and was simply making it up as they went along. The big problem for me is the lack of public hearing on this. And this was troublesome in our district, to the extent that one of my fellow district members put up a Facebook discussion to try and understand public opinion on this, and talk about a damning reality when somebody from, from the RTM has to go and start soliciting commentary from Facebook as opposed to having a public hearing. I'd also like to point out, I've been hearing a lot about the message and the art. This is not art for art's sake. There is an explicit message attached to this. Again, not a problem in this case, but what other explicit messages will we be promoting in the future? Thank you.
All right, Louisa Stone to be followed by Angelica Veronas.
Thank you. I'm Louisa Stone, District Ten. I want to talk about process. If our kids are supposed to ask to be excused before leaving the dinner table, and they start to get up, we ask them to sit down. So then, when they ask to be excused, should we say no because they didn't ask the first time? Of course not. This project was stopped because of process, and now the process is being followed. The question is, shall, should the Conservation Commission accept a gift of $25,000 for a mural? Please vote yes.
Angelica Veronas to be followed by Peter Genovese.
Hi, everyone. I'm a senior at Greenwich High School and also a member of the Environmental Action Club, and it has come to my attention that an argument against this mural is that, quote, "inner-city styles are not an aesthetic expected in Greenwich." I would like to point out that the prioritization of aestheticism is firstly, not valid, considering the wall is currently a dirty cement barrier, and secondly, is the same neglect that is worsening the climate crisis. If we, as a community and globe, continue to focus on the beautification of parking lots or cities rather than a celebration of nature and the environment, our planet will continue to deteriorate and my future will concurrently crumble. As a leading town in Fairfield County, Greenwich bears the responsibility to express our appreciation for the environment and pursuit of a brighter future. This mural is right across from my school, a building wherein young people like myself study the effects of the deterioration of critical pollinators in order to formulate potential solutions. It is ironic thus that increasing awareness around this topic is being rejected, also considering funds for it are a gift from the Greenwich Botanical Center, and it is not costing the town of Greenwich anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Genovese to be followed by Phil Dodson. You don't see him? Phil Dodson to be followed by Jane Weisbecker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. There are many concerns over how this mural project was initiated and approved. The mural moved forward with little or no public knowledge before work began on May eighteenth. The abutting property owners and neighbors were never notified or consulted about the pending project. The mural's memorandum of understanding was not disclosed in our explanos, and it had to be requested before we got it. The memo requires this mural be kept in place for two years with no recourse for earlier removal. The lack of transparency by those involved with approving and advancing this project is appalling. The major concern and issue here is not the subject that people have been describing on this. It's if we approve this mural, it sets the precedent. Others will use it as the basis for putting murals all over town. Problems this will cause must be considered. Approving this first mural will lead to problems over where and what would be acceptable practices for consideration of other murals. There will likely be disagreement and possible litigation over what is considered acceptable or not. Eventually, someone or a group that wants to put up something controversial or political will take advantage of this precedent. This is unfortunately just the way things are today. Some are arguing that we should just give a pass to this one project. The process doesn't really matter, and there will be no further problems. Reality is, there are already other murals being planned on additional public walls in town. There will also be plans presented to put murals on buildings by property owners in the coming days. As RTM members, it is not within our purview to ignore or look the other way when things aren't done properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Weisbecker to be followed by our First Selectman Fred Camillo.
Hi, this is Jane Weisbecker, District Nine. I'm actually the District Nine member who did put up a Facebook post to try to elicit some public response in a group that I'm familiar with that seems to have a wide berth and swath of Greenwich residents on it. I just want to report that I did get one hundred and thirty-four positive comments on the mural. I got nine negative comments on the mural. One thing I'll say about process, I'm a lawyer, I understand process. I don't think that you can fairly change a process in the midst of a project. The, the people that brought this forth and are bringing it forth tonight relied on what was the process at the time that they did this. The only step they didn't take was coming to the RTM, which they've done. If you want a different process for additional art installations in town, then by all means, bring it before the town and have everyone look at it, vet it a thousand times like we're doing on this, and vote on it. But don't enact retroactively a process that affects people who have already gone through various steps, who have raised funds, who would be embarrassed if this thing just gets painted over. I think it also, it's bad optics for the town for this wall that started with a positive message to now be painted over and restored to a concrete wall. Thank you.
First Selectman Fred Camillo to be followed by Avery Helman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I just wanted to just piggyback on some of the comments that have been made already. I, the Board of Selectmen did approve this several months ago for the reasons that have been, several of the reasons that have been stated already, so I don't want to go into that. But, you know, it's certainly, there's a dirty white wall there right now, and this mural does have educational purposes. But I also want to make sure that people know that my firm belief is that when people did reach out to me in the RTM and did express some concerns about how it came about and that the fact it was not a neighborhood notification, and that this would be, you know, going on without RTM vetting of a proposal that really goes in a public space, public property, and that we really don't have a formal policy in place. And I think these are all valid concerns, and I think I would caution everybody going forward that somebody's opposition to this doesn't signify anything other than the fact that there may be, they may be seeking a policy in place so that in the future, we don't have anything going up that may be objectionable to people. And yes, those neighbors do have a say in this, and, you know, they have a right to be heard. So I would say that I support this project. I think it's a good one, but also that I, going forward, that we absolutely have a formal policy in place and that the RTM got it right by taking this up and, and certainly vetting this. So I support it and also support the RTM's vetting of this, this proposal tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Avery Helman to be followed by Scott Kalb. You don't see? Scott, all right, let's jump to Scott Kalb. Well, if Avery Helman appears, we'll come back. Scott Kalb to be followed by Steve McMenamin.
Good evening once again, my fellow RTM members, and thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am in support of the mural project and of accepting the gift for this mural project. I think it's a positive development for our town, and I believe we should not allow technicalities to stop such a deserving project. The Conservation Commission, which is part of our town government, found an ugly blank concrete wall near a bus stop on Route One that no one had paid attention to and was an eyesore. They developed a plan to commission an artist to paint a mural that highlights nature, flowers, birds, and bees. They were entrepreneurial in finding their own sources of funding for the project from the private sector. They were collaborative, and they also followed a disciplined process, getting permission from the Board of Selectmen, the First Selectmen's Office, and even from the state, the Department of Transportation, which has ownership over Route One. They didn't ask the RTM for permission to complete the mural because they didn't know that they had to, and here they are now. They even set a time limit of a minimum of two years, which is pretty standard for art installations. Look, there's been a lot of misinformation disseminated about this mural, in my view. Let's be clear about what it is and what it isn't. It's public art. It's like a statue or any other kind of art. Lots of municipalities in Connecticut have public art. So do we in Greenwich. This mural is not an advertisement. It's not a billboard. It's not a brochure. This is an artistic rendering of nature depicting flowers, birds, and bees. It's not political advocacy. Who's opposed to artwork extolling nature? One claim that's been made is that a mural at a bus stop could distract drivers and cause traffic accidents. Does anyone really believe this? Another specious claim is that upkeep for the mural would be an expense for the town. Keep in mind-
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Steve McMenamin to be followed by Constantine Wells. You have a Steve without a last name, is that what he said? All right, is that, is that Steve McMenamin? We're gonna allow you to unmute. Yeah, raise your hand. If Steve is Steve McMenamin, please raise your hand. Thank you. Time is ticking. You have the floor, Mr. McMenamin. What's wrong? You gotta unmute. But he was there and raised his hand? Please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm the manager of Versailles Farm. We're a commercial vegetable grower in the back country. We grow over fifty crops for our farm stand and local country clubs. We rely heavily on pollinators to stimulate our crops into fruiting. We use organic methods to attract pollinators and to create healthy soil. My wife Ingrid and I have lived in the back country for thirty years. We're master beekeepers, and our honey is prized for its flavor and its natural immunotherapeutic qualities. It's been getting more difficult to keep healthy hives. The sources of pollen are declining, and the pollinator populations are rising due primarily to the popularity of beekeeping. We've got a pollinator gap problem. For years, I've tried to encourage everyone to plant wildflowers. The biggest misconception of colony collapse disorder isn't pesticides, it's the lack of nectar and pollen. And to make matters worse, everyone wants a beehive in their backyard. Consequently, all pollinators suffer. We've been giving away wildflower seeds, and it ain't cheap. While we've been encouraging our friends and neighbors to plant more wildflowers, it's a slow process. One-on-one conversations are not as effective as an organized Town of Greenwich Botanical Garden campaign to win hearts and minds. Everyone benefits, and it helps us put the green in Greenwich. Ingrid and I wholeheartedly support this donation. I think I can speak for hundreds of our customers who eat our tomatoes and calm their allergies with our honey. I think they too would wholeheartedly support this donation.
Thank you. Constantine Wells to be followed by Catherine Labalbo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm speaking tonight as somebody who has very mixed feelings about this, especially about hearing about our great neighbors up the speech, up the street, the McMenamin speaking about this. You know, I know this project is to promote pollinators, which is clearly a noble and necessary cause. I as well have six beehives on my property. I understand this dilemma quite well. And I was gonna get a little bit into how I think the funding was a little bit askew of this, but, you know, I think I'll, I'll yield back on, on that. It, approving this project would set a precedent that could allow for these murals to pop up on every available piece of concrete in town. I've heard numerous conversations from folks who would like to do just that, including on underpasses, outdoor seating partitions on the avenue, and it might not even stop there. Many cities around the country now have murals painted on the actual roadways, that is, the pavement. This vote is between whether Greenwich wants to remain a town or be hurled faster into the realm of a urban landscape with this type of installation. Furthermore, in engaging some folks on this, people hope this passes just to, just to annoy the people that don't want it to pass. That's, that's not, that's, that's not the case for me. I think this is a noble cause, but it's not in the charming nature of historic New England town, and do we want to also allow the politic, potential political, politicalization of public spaces with potentially controversial installations? Again, I encourage the RTM to explore that further. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Labalbo to be followed by Ellen Hawley.
Oh, good evening. I made it in under the wire here. So this conversation came up in our district. We had Myra come present to us, and whether it was coincidentally or not, mural requests are actually becoming more frequent in Greenwich, and there is a process when a mural is on a building. So I wanted everyone to rest assured that while they're asleep in their beds, somebody or somebodies are up reviewing art that's going up on, on buildings or these murals that are going up. There's actually been two in the last two months. And the metric, if you listen to the conversations around this, is how is this, you know, reflective of Greenwich? What does this contribute? And how do we see, you know, this, you know, inspiring or engaging our community and our community values? You know, art is very subjective. We have art over here on the wall. Do we like it? Do we hate it? You know, these are all conversations that it should be, you know, inspiring among us. So it's, it's a very difficult conversation, but looking at it under this filter and under this metric, if I ask those questions of this mural, then my answer is yes, it meets that metric. The Pollinator Pathway is, conversations around it have been ongoing for a number of years. We have the Botanical Gardens involvement. Here on the RTM, we're asking to be approved, an appropriation. It's, it's a funding request. I don't think we have a concern about the floodgates opening up. My understanding was also this went to the Greenscape Committee, which is a committee that's looking on beautification of the post-road corridor. So I fully believe that our administration is going to be able to hammer out how to have more invested public development. I would love to see anybody attend architecture review meetings. They happen on, biweekly on Wednesday nights starting at seven PM. Thank you.
Ellen Hawley to be followed by Walker Dempsey.
Thank you. Good evening. I think most of us, or I hope most of us, can agree that this mural is about bringing awareness to the value of pollinators and nature. That's it. This is not a controversial subject about climate change. I think that we all need to understand a really important point about the difference. The public art is not the same thing as graffiti art. And we are using these terms interchangeably. Let me just try to delineate them a little bit in our minds. Graffiti art or street art is considered illegal. Illegal, I'm going to repeat that, illegal in practice. So this idea, this notion that these graffiti arts or these paintings are just gonna pop up without a process, that would be illegal. We're not talking about that here in this room for this case. And just by contrast, while public art is commissioned and considered culturally enriching and socially acceptable, I think most of us can agree that some things are best left to professionals, such as hiring a professional muralist. We are thrilled that the process will include the high school students. Thank you for the environmental actions club and the art department through the high school for being part of this process. I think most of us can recognize that good questions have come forward in this process. If there are future public art installations, it would be advisable that a town advisory committee with representation from such as the Bruce Greenwich Arts Council and the library's Flynn Gallery, all are all know Greenwich so well, they are versed in their profession to know what is suitable for our residents and what is acceptable for public art. An RTM member, oh, am I in a town? So anyway, let's vote yes for pollinators pathway. Thank you.
Thank you. Walker Dempsey to be followed by Joan Stewart Pratt. All right, well, there's, so is Walker Dempsey here? Is Elizabeth Dempsey here? You may unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Hi, I cede to Allison Walsh.
What?
Hi, I cede to Allison Walsh.
All right, so you pass. Joan Stewart-
No, I cede to Allison Walsh.
I know, I heard you. And that is not our procedure. So either you speak or we move to the next speaker. All right, Joan Stewart Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone. If the goal is to educate folks about pollinator pathways, please do it in a venue that is not dangerous to drivers and pedestrians. A venue like one of our parks or beaches, or perhaps when one walks along Greenwich Avenue or Sound Beach Avenue, would be more suitable, but not on the post-road at a very dangerous intersection. I would like to remind those who may not have lived here as long as I have, on the corner of Overlook and the post-road since nineteen sixty-seven. I'm also a Greenwich High School student, class of seventy-eight. There have been many, many accidents at this intersection, including when a car was hit and ended up in our backyard. I was the one who ended up calling, called the state, and guardrails were installed on the corner of Overlook and the post-road, and they're still there today. The car was in our backyard. I strongly believe that having this mural, which is a fabulous idea, it just doesn't belong there. Having this mural will be a distraction to drivers and bikers. And I also have spoken with a couple of my neighbors who agree. Thank you for your evening, and please vote against this mural in this location. Thank you.
Sarah Tosi to be followed by Diana Klinger.
You take to my attention that some of the Greenwich High School students have to leave post-road work, and they left with me. I am a volunteer at Greenwich High School, member of the PTA, volunteer GHS.
So they're not here?
They have to leave. They were young ladies, and they left-
This is Sarah Tosi?
Yes, Sarah Tosi. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, dear fellow RTM fellows. Pollinate, I am reading this on behalf of Saratoshi. She was here before, but she had to leave for homework. She's a student at Greenwich High School. Pollinator Pathway mural should be painted as an artist. I know art is a good way to influence actions. This mural will not only be a beautiful piece of art in our town, but it will be educational. It is important to inform others on local pollinators. It is important to inspire others to help make beneficial changes to our community and environment. Thank you.
All right, Diana Klinger to be followed by Meg Kaich. No Diana Klinger. All right, Meg is a Kaicher to be followed by Dean Goss. It's K-A-I-C-H-E-R. All right, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Meg McCauley-Kasher, and I had the privilege of being the president of the board for Greenwich Botanical Center. GBC was founded in nineteen fifty-seven and is a nonprofit volunteer organization dedicated to promoting horticulture, conservation, and the arts through educational programs, outreach activities, and special events. We've had a history of partnering with the town's Conservation Commission, going back to getting grants with our former Town Conservation Commissioner Director Denise Savageau. We've worked closely with our former town tree warden, Bruce Spayman, and of course, we now work closely with Pat Sesto, as well as several of the other environmental nonprofits here in town. We have about thirty-six environmental nonprofits here in our town, and many of us have been involved with pollinator pathways, as well as Sustainable Greenwich and Sustainable Connecticut for many years now. This mural project is one that I think is important. GBC has supported this mural project as it directly relates to the three tenets of our mission: Horticulture, as it depicts florals; Conservation, as it refreshes and beautifies a highly visible post-road wall en route to our town's high school, thereby frequently engaging community members from all areas of town; and the arts, as the mural colorfully decorates a previously shabby and neglected slab. We really do believe this value of art as a means to educate, and we hope that this raises the town's profile with conservation and particularly with pollinators. Please support this initiative. Thanks.
Dean Goss to be followed by Alexander Todorovic.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think we're all talking about unintended consequences here. It's not the mural itself or the message. I just, everything's been covered that I wanted to talk to you pretty much, except the lady who talked just a few speakers ago about the distractions and the traffic problems. That's what I was gonna talk about, because with the plain, ugly, concrete wall, quote unquote, if you rear-ended another car at that intersection, you wouldn't have a reason to sue the town of Greenwich, but now you will. You know, and I can't help but think we're gonna, the idea that we don't have any costs on this thing, we're gonna have sort of long-ended costs, because we're gonna be dragged into court every time there's a traffic accident or a pedestrian is hit in this area. You know, for those of you coming down the post-road, heading for Cosco, you know, it's kind of hard to stop sometimes going downhill. And coming uphill, you're often blinded, you know, by the sun, and the student pedestrians aren't the greatest at really being aware of what's going on either. And it's just, it's just a problem, the way I see it. So I think that's another unintended consequence you need to mull over when you're thinking of voting, because I think there are just all sorts of negative unintended consequences to this thing, and I'd urge you to vote now. Thank you.
Alexander Todorovic to be followed by Louise Washer.
Hi, do you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, I'm a resident of District Five, and in addition to being a resident, I also run a business in the town of Greenwich. I support the mural project because I think it's an art installation at the heart of town on the campus of Greenwich High School that would add energy and vibrancy to the town. On the one hand, we have a dingy gray wall imbining graffiti versus a beautiful art installation coupled with a real garden. I'm sure that this installation will add appeal to the area for all constituencies, from business to homeowners to high school students. The mural will be executed by a well-known artist with the involvement of GHS students, who will actively participate and benefit from it, and will depict flowers habitats from our local environment. This is a well-conceived and worthwhile effort, and we should all stand behind it. I think this project is non-controversial and non-political. And, you know, a lot of people talked about process and following the process. I think people who supported this in good faith followed a robust process that lasted for six months, obtaining permissions and working in conjunction with town authorities, including Department of Transportation. And, you know, whoever says that we may wake up one day of washing graffiti in this town, you know, they should know that it took us six months just to get the permits, and another three months to get in front of RTM. I think there's a legitimate point that was made about clarifying the rules for future approvals, and, you know, various interests that stakeholders have, including neighbors. And I think RTM should feel free working with town authorities to clarify those rules. But I think people who promoted and supported this project in good faith followed all the rules in the books. And, you know, if there needs to be clarification, I think we all support that. So I vote to support this project, and thank you.
All right, our last speaker, because we are up against the one-hour time limit, will be Louise Washer. She's not here. All right, Myra Cloggenbrink.
Thank you. My name's Myra Cloggenbrink. I'm co-chair of Greenwich Pollinator Pathway, and I helped to usher this project forward. Greenwich Pollinator Pathway collaborates with the Conservation Commission, Parks and Recreation, the Land Trust, the Audubon, the Tree Conservancy, Greenwich Botanical Center, to plant and install and restore native habitat throughout the town. We've been doing this for quite a while now. And so it wasn't it was innovative to come up with the idea of a mural, but it wasn't out of the ordinary for us to go to the Conservation Commission and say, "Look, we're speaking to the choir with our constituency. In order to reach out to the larger population, we need to do something more." And the mural was centered upon as a way to communicate our mission, which is to put habitat back into the human environment and connect your yard, your park, your woodland, your shoreline, into a continuous pathway for this wildlife that supports not only our landscape, but our own food supply. So we're very passionate about this. We worked really hard to get our permit from the state, and we acted in good faith. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
All right, that is the end of the discussion of item number five. And I am aware Mr. Spilow did refer to a motion that wanted to be offered to postpone indefinitely. I will not recognize that motion. And the reason is, motion to postpone indefinitely is the flip side of a motion on the merits of the item. It flips those who are opposed to the resolution to vote yes on postponing it indefinitely, which effectively kills it. But if there was a majority no vote, we would have to take a vote on the merits anyway. So there's no point in taking up a motion to postpone this indefinitely. The motion on the merits will accomplish exactly the same thing. If you are, so I'm now going to call for the district tabulators to mark their voting cards, item number five, and proceed to poll their delegation. If you are in favor of approving this item, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. We will, we will take our five-minute break. Now, we have remaining four items, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, sixteen. Of those, I anticipate eight and nine to be the ones, you know, that might require some time. And I've been requested to recognize Susan Fahey, who wants to offer a motion to end this meeting, and at some point, I think she was gonna say midnight and return tomorrow night. But we're not gonna take that up now. So right now, we're simply voting on item number five. If you are in favor of approving it, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. So five minutes? All right, that's our five-minute voting period. We do not have the result, but we may continue with, oh, I'm sorry. So at this point, let me just tell you where we stand here. Item eight is the waste ordinance. Item nine is the easement with Eversource Cardinal Stadium. And then we have the Peter Lowe appointment, planning and zoning, that is eleven and twelve. And we have the GOSSA labor contract, school administrators. The GOSSA contract, you know, is not gonna take time. I don't expect the Peter Lowe matter to take time. So eight, nine. I think nine has a lot of changes, but not controversial, and it would just be a matter of our Law, Save, and Rules Committee laying out those changes for us and then approving them. I mean, this is my understanding, and there are a couple of motions addressed to the waste ordinance. I don't know how much time we need to discuss that. So that's where we are. And but at this time, I will recognize Susan Fahey for purpose of offering a motion. Ms. Fahey?
Hi, I'd like to make a motion to end the meeting tonight at midnight and reconvene either tomorrow or next Monday night. I'm not sure what people can do. I've been getting-
Tomorrow, it's gotta be tomorrow.
Okay, then tomorrow night.
All right, is there a second? All right, there is a second. Discussion on the motion to adjourn at midnight and return tomorrow night. Anyone care to discuss that? I don't wanna come back tomorrow. I'd rather stay myself. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator, may the Chair of P&amp;Z speak?
No. This is, this is members. This is, do you have an item that hasn't been addressed yet?
I have an item, the appointment of Mr. Lowe is still before you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And if you end-
Yes, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. If you end the meeting- If you end the meeting, you, I believe there is a legal problem. You have appointed Mr. Wells to fill Mr. Lowe's position, but that means that Mr. Lowe has to go somewhere, and his term has not ended. Therefore, at this moment in time, I have one extra alternate on P&amp;Z.
All right. We can take up.
Thank you, sir.
We'll, we'll take the low up tonight.
Thank you very much, sir.
No matter what we do. Thank you for pointing that out. Further discussion? All right, let's do a raised hand. This is a motion to adjourn at midnight and return tomorrow night at eight o'clock, assuming everything is available. If it's not, then we got a problem. So all hands down, only members voting. If you are in favor of adjourning this meeting at 12 and returning tomorrow, please raise your hand now. All right, hands down, please. If you are opposed to that motion to adjourn and would like to finish tonight, please raise your hand now. All right, so we have the, the yeses, the, doesn't matter, 105 is more than whatever you had. So that motion has carried. So is there any objection to taking up the, the low appointment now? There is a problem if we don't, having already appointed Mr. Well.
Yeah.
My question was, is there any objection to taking 11 and, items 11 and 12 up now? All right, thank you. May we, may we, may we have the resolutions on item 11 and 12? Is, what? He's not offering the resolution, is he? Do we have the, someone from the Board of Selectmen? Go off of this. All right, Mr. McKnight, would you just put it before us, please?
Yes, sure. Number 11, Peter Lowe is being elevated from an alternate position to the R1 position to fill a vacancy this term, which will expire on October 31st, 2021. Number 12, I have an amendment for number 12 because the resolution did not include a start date. A need to define when the first full year starts appears necessary to eliminate any confusion with item 11. I have the resolution, if you'd like it now?
Yes, please.
Good. Resolved that the following, following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen, be appointed a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission R1 for a term beginning November 1st, 2021, and expiring October 31st, 2024.
All right, thank you. And since that was a substitute, is there a second? All right, so, so items 11 and 12, 12 as a, a substitute on 12 are now before us. Let's get the reports of the committees. Who wants to go first, Mr. McKnight or?
Yeah, sure. Okay. On our appointments meeting September 21st, we interviewed Peter Lowe to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning. All committee members were present, and we took a vote for 11 and 12 combined. Also in attendance was the P&amp;Z Commission Chair, and she related Peter's attendance was very good. Mr. Lowe discussed his tenure on the board and reflected how his business experience as a management consultant was an aid to his work on the commission. Prior to our meeting, one of our members from District Two emailed a detailed account of an interaction with Mr. Lowe. The delegate was not able to attend our Zoom meeting, so her alternate was going to describe the incident, which she did not witness. As Chair, I was disinclined to have any further recounting of the incident, which was personally described by our member in her email. I also felt we had enough information to form our opinion as to Mr. Lowe's suitability to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning. Buoyed by our vote of 11, 1, 0, I felt the procedure was correct. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Good evening again. The Land Use Committee interviewed Mr. Lowe last Monday night. As you heard, Mr. Lowe has served two and a half years as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, during which he participated in the work of the commission as a regular member would, often having the opportunity to vote when other members were absent or recused. We asked about the Planning and Zoning Commission's efforts on affordable housing. Mr. Lowe described the pressures on the town and the multi-pronged approach to address the issue, noting that members of the commission are moving in the same direction. Asked about the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission in addressing climate change, Mr. Lowe noted that the commission can and is revising landscape regulations, that they can require energy efficiencies and sustainability measures, heat island mitigation, mitigation, and coastal buffer regulations. He feels the commission is very mindful of the issue and taking action to achieve some measure of mitigation. Asked about zoning issues he views as particularly important, Mr. Lowe stated that there are opportunities with historic overlays and tightening of loopholes that will benefit the town. The Land Use Committee voted 12, 0, 0 in favor of the appointments as they appear on the call.
All right, thank you. We have the vote on the Pollinator Pathway item five. Those in favor, 121, opposed, 68, abstaining 5. That item has carried. All right, on item 11 and 12, we will now have discussion on this. I will tell you that we have 11 people signed up, all in, speaking in favor, so maybe Mr. Camillo and Margarita Albin can speak, and if anyone else wants to speak, we can then go, go from there. First Selectman, Fred Camillo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I speak in favor of the nomination of Peter Lowe to a position of regular member of P&amp;Z. He served, as you heard, two and a half years as an alternate. The Board of Selectmen did take up his nomination. He interviewed well. He passed unanimously. He has demonstrated over the two and a half years a strong and consistent commitment to P&amp;Z, and he has the support of his colleagues there. So I urge his approval tonight. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Margarita Albin?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members of the RTM. Once again, thank you. My name is Margarita Albin. I chair the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. I rise to speak in support of the appointment of Peter Lowe as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. As mentioned, Peter has served on the commission for two and a half years and was reappointed as an alternate in December of 2020. During his tenure on P&amp;Z, Peter Lowe has demonstrated himself to be committed, thoughtful, fair, and courteous. He cares deeply for this town and strives to enhance and protect it. His service is a great asset to our community. Please vote favorably on his appointment.
Thank you. Any others who signed up interested in speaking at this point? What? Nicholas Macri? Oh, and Peter Lowe, I'm sorry, and Peter Lowe. All right, so Nicholas Macry?
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, good evening. I'm Nick Macri, Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm here to speak on behalf of our commission member and support Peter Lowe. It is two years serving on the commission. Peter has always brought balance and insightful opinion to our deliberations and decisions. He's continued to work as a regular member as would, as invaluable as the applications before us grow larger and increasing in complexity. Peter's commitment to the town of Greenwich through his service on the commission is exemplary and is a model for all of those who serve on our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Lowe?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just thought it might be useful to make a few brief comments about my initial and ongoing interest in volunteering for the P&amp;Z Commission. I was born and raised in Greenwich and have lived in town for 50 years. My perspective on the town's landscape extends back to my childhood in the town in the 50s and 60s. After living away for some years, I moved back to town in 1993 with my young family. Needless to say, I've witnessed dramatic changes, both structural and cultural in Greenwich over the decades. I have an abiding concern for the preservation and vitality of this town and perceive the need for an appropriate balance between stewardship of the town's assets and scarce resources and the sensible development of its existing landscape. I believe that my historical and current familiarity with the town, combined with my educational and business background, enabled me to contribute meaningfully to the commission and to help ensure that the principles articulated in the POCD are upheld and that town's interests are served. Last week, I was surprised and horrified to read an email submitted to the Appointments Committee in advance of that committee's consideration of my candidacy as a regular member of the P&amp;Z. That email made unsubstantiated claims concerning my behavior. I've acted in a volunteer capacity for numerous organizations in Greenwich, including coaching town sports for our kids' teams, serving in the local schools and Scholarship Committee of Harvard College for 20 years, the Board of Directors of the Stammage Club for six years, and the Planning and Zoning Commission for the past two and a half years. I've worked collaboratively and constructively with my colleagues in these organizations, and I believe that I've earned their respect. Never once has there been a question regarding my behavior or demeanor, and I believe that there are many people within and outside of Greenwich who would be willing to attest to my character. Thank you.
All right, anyone else who wanted to be heard? Okay. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Items, combined items 11 and 12, and please proceed to poll your delegation. If you are in favor of appointing Peter Lowe to be a regular member of Planning and Zoning, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. That'll be the final vote that we take tonight, so we will await the resolution of this vote and proceed to adjourn. The plan would be to come back tomorrow night at 8:00 PM, same setup, unless we hear otherwise. All right, so we don't need a clock. This is our last. Let's see if we can expedite this vote. Thank you. All set? We do have the result of the vote on combined items 11 and 12, appointment of Peter Lowe to Planning and Zoning. Those in favor, 160, opposed, six, abstaining, eight. Those items have carried. That is our final item of business tonight. This meeting is now adjourned and will continue tomorrow night at eight o'clock. Thank you all for coming, and someone will see you tomorrow.